Good evening. I'd like to commence the regular board meeting of the San Francisco Board of Education for November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two is now called to order. Mr. Steele, roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Vice President Bogus?
Here.
President Lamb?
Here.
Commissioner Shu?
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Here.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward? Commissioner Matamady? Thank you.
At this time before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There'll be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
Seeing none in person?
Seeing no virtual speakers.
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to recess for closed session.
Hey, the readout of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two's closed session. Uh, the first item is a vote on student expulsion matters. I move to approve the stipulated expulsion agreement of one high school student. Matter number two zero two two dash two zero two three dash number zero five from the district for the remainder of the fall semester twenty twenty-two suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring twenty twenty-three. Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander? Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Uh, second report from closed session. Uh, in one matter of public employee discipline dismissal or release, the board by a vote of six eight yeses and one absence approved a resolution of intent to dismiss to dismiss one probationary certificated employee. In the same matter of employee discipline dismissal release, the board by a vote of six yeses, one absence approved a resolution to immediately suspend one probationary certificated employee without pay pending the hearing. And that's a deposition of charges against them. In one matter of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to general counsel. In the matter of First Students Inc., First San Francisco Unified School District, San Francisco Superior Court case number CPF two one five one seven three eight one. The board by a vote of six yeses, one absence voted to reject the First Students salutary offer to compromise.
Thank you, Vice President Bogus. Good evening, everyone. Like to in open up with our landit law enforcement. We, the San Francisco Board of Education, acknowledge that we are on the unceded and special homeland of the Rama Tish Aloney, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. As the indigenous stewards of this land and in accordance with their tradition, the Rama Tish Aloney have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. As guests, we recognize that we benefit from living and working on their traditional homeland. We wish to pay our respects by acknowledging the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tish community and by affirming their sovereign rights as first peoples. Next agenda item, two approval of board minutes for regular reg- um, meeting of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a first?
Second.
Any edits or correction?
Yes.
I, I think so. So on, um, the page two, the top report from closed session continued. Um, during our special meeting closed session, the board by a vote of six sides and one no, et cetera, et cetera. The last line says up to the stipulated amount, and I think we were supposed to correct that to reflect that we were not actually stipulating that we were going to pay any amount, but we were actually receiving money.
Correct. And if, I know Gen- General Counsel Hauck is.
I think she's.
Okay, and I do see that above that it says before we report out for closed session, the regular meeting, we do want to correct him a statement on the report, but we never actually made that correction. In the minutes, because I.
In the minutes.
I don't actually think we made the, did we make the correction?
We did.
We did make the correction during.
So we just need it updated, corrected in the minutes. And can that be just, uh, uh, we're talking about correcting minutes? That just be noted as a correction that's needed, approved with the correction, and then we'll update the minutes?
Right, so my recollection is that we did actually correct it.
We did. We did actually correct it after the fact, so I think this is an error in the way the minutes have captured it. So, yes, Superintendent Wayne, we can approve the minutes with the correction we've noted.
And we'll just do roll call vote.
Thank you. Student delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student delegate Knoshta?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Thank you. Opening items on number three, review order of agenda items. I do want to acknowledge I am going to, um, bump up item K, the discussion items of student outcomes progress monitoring to after general public comment, so we can have engagement from our student delegates and our board members. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Wayne for the superintendent's report.
Um, thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, everybody. Um, so wanted, I'll do, uh, just my general report, uh, first, and then a bit later in the agenda, uh, we, I will do the, um, empower implementation update, uh, report and, um, do we have a being presented? So while we're waiting for the slide to get on, um, I'll share the first thing I want to share is enrollment season is in full swing. And so we have our next, uh, enrollment workshop coming up. That's at Monroe Elementary School in the Excelsior, uh, on November seventeenth from six to seven thirty P M. It's in English, Spanish, and Chinese. And so just really encourage you, uh, and families who are enrolling their students to take advantage of these uh, opportunities to learn about the district and our schools and our enrollment process. And we're here to help you and make it as smooth, uh, uh, process as possible. Uh, we're eager to have you join the S F U S D community. Um, so just want to remind everybody that if you have not, um, submitted your multi-purpose family income form, please do so. This used to be called the, the free and reduced lunch form, but now we're able to offer lunch to all students for, for free. Uh, but it's so important we collect this information because this drives our funding for our, um, uh, local control funding formula supplemental and concentration uh, allocations, as well as our Title One funding eligibility for grants and in many other areas. So, uh, please make sure you submitted that. And you can go to schoolcafe.com and we make it very easy for you to work on submitting. Um, just want to highlight some celebrations this month. Uh, this month is our Native American Indian Heritage Month, and we're paying tribute to the rich ancestry, ancestry and traditions of Native Americans in November. Um, and it really throughout the year, um, we want to pay tribute. And we do believe in teaching history accurately with multiple representations. And this month provides an opportunity to emphasize that as well as, uh, seeking out diverse literature in our school and classroom libraries to ensure we have diverse representation. Um, also, um, want to take, uh, this opportunity, we can't see this either, to, um, to honor, uh, this is, uh, the, the slide notes said there's a transgender day of remembrance. And so November twentieth is actually, uh, the, uh, official transgender, transgender, transgender day of remembrance. And it's an opportunity to honor the member, memory of our transgender community who have lost, uh, uh, people to anti-transgender violence. And, you know, we have been a leader nationwide in honoring the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, two-spirit, intersex, queer, and questioning members of our, of our community. And we actually have a, a LGBTQ student services, uh, who, um, that have pioneered ways to make our classroom, schoolyards, facilities, and bathrooms welcoming and affirming for, for students and families. With that, I do want to note, though, I've heard at board meetings, and as I've done my listening and learning, that there's more we could be doing, and particularly around implementing some uh, commitments that we've made, such as gender neutral bathrooms. So I've been asking staff and have received a report, um, uh, on where we have them and where we need, we still need to make sure that there's access for students. Uh, and so we will be following up on that and providing communication around that. So it's, we want, when we, uh, uh, you know, have these days of remembrance, that it's not just words, but it's clear that we're taking action uh, to support our community. Um, then, uh, just want to end with a, a school highlight on Monday. Sheridan Elementary and the African American Achievement and Leadership Initiative participated in Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. So both a, a community building activity and talking about our history, um, an opportunity for our students to learn about, uh, you know, brave young leaders, people who, you know, are their age, um, who've made a difference in moving us towards being a more equitable society. And so students enjoyed healthy snacks as prizes and a community walk and read aloud. So thank you, Ali and Sheridan, for hosting that important event.
Thank you. Um, and I want to also acknowledge a couple of announcements I did not include at the beginning of, um, reconvening to open session. One is the S F Gov TV is unable to broadcast the meeting today. That is why the public on Zoom will only see the board view of the board room. And we are excited, um, to announce that we do have childcare this evening for all of our meetings moving forward. The childcare room is just across the hall in the Education Placement Center waiting room. So with those announcements, I will now turn it over to our student delegates, Hanson and Knoshta, for their reports.
Thank you, President Lamb. Hi, everyone. We are so happy to announce that we, as a student advisory council, have officially begun committees. We now currently have a student support, district and city accountability, health, safety and environmental, social justice and equity, and curriculum and instruction committees. We have also begun preparing for our annual youth summit, where we invite every S F U S D school to participate in a day full of speeches, workshops, and a delicious catered lunch. We are also planning, we are also planning to have it tentatively scheduled for April twenty-eighth.
Last month, Isabella and I were given the opportunity to present at a citywide hearing in this Board of Supervisors Public Safety Committee regarding sexual violence in S F U S D and the district's response to student-led protests from last year. And we're pleased to have garnered commitments from the San Francisco Department of Public Health and the Department of Children, Youth, and Their Families to help improve health curriculum by incorporating consent starting in elementary schools, as well as the increasing the capacity of our high school wellness centers and middle school mental health supports by next school year. And we look forward to building these partnerships for the rest of the year. Thank you.
I want to just thank our student delegates and our, our students for their leadership and participating in the public safety hearing at the Board of Supervisors. Your continued, um, advocacy focus on ensuring that the district is delivering on its promises and um, and its plans is, um, very important. So again, thank you all for your leadership. Now I'd like to, uh, shift to the payroll state of emergency update. I'd like to call on Dr. Wayne.
Uh, thank you, Board President Lamb, and good evening again. Uh, for the last several board meetings, I made sure to include an update on, on our empower implementation, uh, you know, as part of my superintendent's report. However, since the last board meeting, we declared a payroll state of emergency and wanted to make sure that we were, uh, providing an update in, on, uh, the progress, our progress since then, and really giving space for the community to understand, uh, what we're doing to address this ongoing concern. And so I, it seems like we still don't have access to share the slides on, on screen, so my apologies for that. So you'll hear a little bit more reading than, than you normally would. But, um, just as first, just as a reminder, um, on November seventh, we declared a payroll state of emergency to enable us to take extraordinary corrective action to fix Empower SF. And, you know, we're committed to making our staff whole, to being transparent about our progress, both, uh, the good news and the bad news, and being held accountable to resolving these issues. Uh, and, you know, we reached this point because, you know, we, I, you know, since starting, and I'm now in my fifth month here, I knew we had had, uh, issues around payroll. And as I was learning about those issues, saw that it was, you know, we needed additional support and had brought in Alvarez and Marcel, uh, a firm, uh, that has, uh, you know, the technical expertise and additional people power to support us and has done these kind, this kind of work for districts and organizations that are in a state of emergency to do an assessment, uh, of the situation and propose a corrective action plan. And the assessment revealed our problems are more complex and, uh, than, uh, you know, we initially believed, and we're going to merit this kind of extraordinary action to resolve. And so this is why we declared the payroll state of emergency, um, which allow, you know, has allowed us to, you know, real, reallocate resources, um, to be able to focus on this issue. So, uh, what has happened since declaring the state of emergency? So we've reassigned twenty F T E, um, approximately twenty F T E of S F U S D staff to the command center, where we're working on these issues in one location. Um, this increased our full-time devoted F T E, that's full-time employees, from five to approximately twenty-five, uh, people in S F U S D working on this. And then, uh, today we had a full day of training of our corrective action plan. Uh, and we had everybody in the room. This was training with our reassigned staff, but this is where, aha. Um, if you go to the, uh, next slide, where you can see everybody was together and, you know, um, with us were not just the S F U S D staff and leaders, but we also had, um, our, uh, implementation partner, Emphasis. We had the representatives from their software provider, SAP, that is a, a software behind this. We had partners from the city of San Francisco, uh, there helping us out. We had, um, partners from, uh, we had payroll, uh, contractors from Robert Half, who was, uh, there. We had Alvarez and Marcel, and we even had the California Department of Education, our assigned experts there. So really, this is now truly a command center where we're all there uh, to understand the issues and make accelerated progress in resolving them. Um, the other, uh, things we've done since, uh, declaring this last week, we communicated directly with the employees who have tickets in and are waiting for a response, that they'll be assigned a case manager. And we published a dashboard, um, on our progress. And we, um, SAP moved us to, uh, global escalation status. So I'd like to share a little bit more on those last two points. So if you go, um, to the next slide, on our website, you can go and you can, um, see, uh, our progress towards resolving, um, issues. And we know the big question everybody asks, and we want an answer to and need an answer to, is when will this be fully resolved? When will be, when will be, will we be at a place where the impact to our employees for payroll is really negligible or nonexistent? Because that's being, being, uh, you know, our definition of success is that our employees are not focusing on their payroll. They're focusing on their, uh, on their paycheck. They're focusing on their job. Alvarez and Marcel is doing the analysis to be able to share a timeline. We know, we know this is most what the public and all of us want to know. In the meantime, we can share progress on how we are addressing the, um, number of tickets that are, uh, are, are coming in, um, how we're, how many we're closing, how long it's taking us to close, the average days that they stay there. Can you go to the previous slide? Again, one more time. Um, so just, it should go again if you press, uh, play. Um, so you should be able to see here, um, if you, right, we're tracking each week. And if, for example, the open payroll tickets goes up, uh, that's not the progress you need. If it goes down, uh, it is. And, and so we're trying to demonstrate that, uh, again, being transparent about our progress. The other thing I want to highlight is that, um, SAP, um, ha, we are now, uh, been moved to global escalation status. So now you can go to the next, uh, uh, next slide. And so SAP is the software that our Empower SF system uses. And so when, um, you know, they'd been providing support, but when we talked to them about, really, we're in a state of emergency, we got placed into the highest level of, uh, escalation. And, uh, you know, with visibility to their executive board. And so I just met with them this past week and spoke with their vice president about the seriousness of this issue and how we, we, we need them, uh, to partner with us to make this software work for us. And so, um, they have, uh, a team of experts who are working with us, and they've also joined the command center, as I mentioned. Um, and we're getting now weekly reports on the issues that they can, um, uh, that they're charged with resolving, uh, as well as providing us a timeline on how those specific issues will be resolved. And if you go to the next slide, um, you know, we, we get asked, why are we, you know, uh, you know, um, do we need to replace our software? And, and last update, Alvarez and Marcel said that really we need to get the software configured so that it's working for us rather than, than replace it. And SAP, um, once, you know, they have worked with other public organizations and other districts and wants to continue working with us and are committed to making the software, uh, work with us. So, um, uh, you should expect to see these, uh, reports at every board meeting until we uh, are out of our state of emergency. And again, you will hear soon what that timeline will, will look like. In the meantime, please check out our dashboard and our website to understand more, uh, the efforts we're making to resolve these issues. That concludes my report.
I'm going to open it up, see if there's public comment at this time. And then I will also, um, see if there's any board members with questions or clarification.
Please raise your hand if you care to share your public comment on this item. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches, por favor, levantes su manos y desean añadir un comentario público. Gracias.
I need to be up. Yes, seeing some hands raised. So I'll call the first group. Be Jordan, Danielle, Patrick, Sarah, and Charles. Again, Jordan, Danielle, Patrick, Sarah, and Charles. Um, are we doing one minute, President Lamb, for a total one minute? Each speaker will have one minute to speak, and we will have a total of, how long for this item, President Lamb?
One minute.
A good total times.
Total time, six, six minutes.
Okay, and we'll have a total of six minutes. So again, Danielle, Patrick, Sarah, Charles. Danielle, go ahead, please. Did you update the? Sorry, it looks like we. Danielle, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm, I'm wondering, is this a general public comment or is this about the item that was just discussed? Because I think I might be confused.
This is the item that was just discussed.
Oh, okay, I will lower my hand then.
Thank you. Patrick?
Hi, thank you very much, uh, Patrick Wolf, and, um, thank you for the update. I, I think obviously everybody wants this empower situation resolved. It's clear how seriously, uh, admin is taking this. I think one thing that is missing so far from the explanation is what exactly is the problem? I mean, it's been going on for months, and I think it would be helpful for all of us just to understand why this is such an intractable problem, to understand it as best as possible, if you could explain why this system is so screwed up, what the problem is. Um, just so that we all have a better understanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah?
Sarah? Hi, my name is Sarah Kern, and I have three children at Glen Park School. One hundred and thirty-five parents and guardians from our school signed a letter that we will send to you tomorrow via email in the U S Postal Service. Please resolve the empower payroll system problems. Our beloved, amazing, and hard worker, working teachers and staff continue to be negatively impacted by this dysfunction. Several staff have new problems with their pay and benefits that have come up just in the past two weeks. They still show up every day to educate our children, and we are grateful for their work. We implore you, thank you for the work that you're doing, but it needs to happen yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles? Charles? Hey, I will call the.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Sorry about that. Um, yes, we need a timeline for the empower fix. Now that the election is over, and congratulations to those that won, now it is time to get to work. Ask yourself this question. Will we be the school board oversees the end of free public education in one of the richest cities in the world? Do you want to be a school board or soup of a district that has to stop offering in-person education because of employee attrition? Because that is what we are looking at, and that is what will happen if you don't fix payroll. Which students are going, are you going to tell to not show up? Who will be your focal population that still gets a teacher? Are teachers supposed to be rich and just work for free? If you don't fix payroll and benefits and hire some more subs, hundreds, if not thousands of employees will quit. If only half of the people with an outstanding ticket quits, that's twenty-three hundred people. I don't know why you would want the job you have right now, because if you fail to fix payroll and the state should take over and you should lose all local control. Just because you can't fix payroll, it's horrible. I wish you the best of luck, and the kids of this city need you to come through for them. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll call the final group, which will be, uh, Ms. Marshall, Chris Klaus, and Anthony. Again, that will be Ms. Marshall, Chris Klaus, and Anthony.
Good evening. I said this a year ago, either January or February. You all let, you all fired the deputy superintendent, Ma Young Lee, and blamed him for this, for this payroll debacle, which is absolutely not his fault. You wasted thirteen million dollars of taxpayer money, another five million or more on this new consultants. You're moving staffs. Use a hard, hard people, don't move the twenty staff members. Hire people who have this expertise, give them a signing bonus, and get this straight. The whole board should be fired. The superintendent, you're new, so we'll give you a couple more months. But this is horrible. It is absolutely not acceptable at all. And again, oh, the deputy superintendent, an apology, because you blamed him for this mess, and it was absolutely not his fault. Shame on you.
Thank you. Chris Klaus?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm Chris Klaus, and I'll keep my comments. Thank you for taking this seriously. Thank you for listening to us, both from the start of this and especially with the actions that have been taken recently by both our union and rank and file members of our union and unions across the district. We need a timeline, a reasonable timeline of A, when all problems are going to be fixed, and B, when individuals should be able to expect resolutions to their problems. I have a staff member at my site who received word today that district believes she has been paid, even though she has not. She transitioned from being a para to being a teacher. She is still being paid incorrectly, sometimes on the para schedule, sometimes not at all. Please, you know, I'm from Washington High School. Reach out to this person and speak to them on the human level. Do not blame them for the mistakes that have been happening because of empower and get us resolution on all of. And get us resolution on all of these outstanding health tickets. Within the next two weeks, I think seems reasonable. And please, let's try to make sure there are no problems with the upcoming back pay of six.
Thank you. Thank you. And Anthony?
Hi, this is Anthony. Yeah, I wanted to say San Francisco is a unique and special city, but. Why, why is this the only city I've heard of that's unable to get a payroll system that pays its teachers? What do other cities do of size around the country? What do they use for payroll? What does New York use? Why are we the only ones finding ourselves in these situations? Is it time to scrap empower? Why are we trying to fix a system that seems to be unfixable? Maybe it's time to cut our losses. And find a new payroll system. Look at what, look at what another school district uses and works and manages to pay its teacher. And manages to pay its teachers with. Let's, if we can figure this out, this doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our virtual public comment.
Thank you. Before I open up for commissioners, to commissioners, I do want to have translation make the announcement, please.
Thank you, President Lamb.
Buenas noches, SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If you need interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce a P number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas noches, el Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres, uno, nueve, tres, ocho, dos, nueve, seis, siete, seis. Por favor, introduce la clave, seis, seis, cinco, nueve, nueve, seis, nueve, siete, seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up to colleagues if you have questions and I do want to recognize again our partners that are here. From A and M as well as SAP. So just wanted to recognize them. And their intensive partnership in in working with us to solve and fix this problem in the payroll system. Colleagues, Vice President Bogus.
Yeah, I was wondering, if you could, or if whoever the most appropriate person is, could I, I guess. Give us an idea of the scope of the problem and kind of. I feel like you covered it some, but just I I think. Knowing the public just I think has a question about how this has essentially been going on so long and kind of like what is like the transition that we're seeing now to address it. And so. I'm interested, you could like address that and give us some more context on. How we're moving forward, I guess, different than how we were before.
Yeah. Sure, let me provide a little context of the why and why it take, why it's taking so long. So when moving over to new payroll system. The, the rules need to be input of how, what the system should follow to pay people. And we have a lot of. Rules that for, for a district of this size and where there's some complexity in the rules that we have. So for example. We've heard about some of our issues with health benefits. That's because we do not administer our own health benefits. The city of San Francisco administers our health benefits. So. We learned one of the problems was the communication that was happening between our system and their system around the health benefits. Or tonight, you just heard a. A teacher share that a para who moved from being a para to a teacher is having pay issues. Well. Our para educators are paid bi-monthly, twice a month. Our teachers are paid once a month and making that shift in the system. Has been challenging and created some of these pay issues. And so I share these as two concrete examples. So imagine that then when I talk about there's, you know, forty-five hundred or four thousand employees with tickets. There may be different variations of these. Some of these we have fixed and you can identify, oh. All the paras who switched to teachers, now we understand this is issue. What do we need to do? What's different now is we have with different teams working on it to get to the root cause. And not just respond to the individual ticket, but to change the the system. But each ticket might reveal. A deeper issue in in how the rules were programmed. But in in particular, that's why it keeps. You know, the the why of it's how so hard to fix is that we have to now backtrack and, you know, everything that, all the rules that were entered for everyone that was incorrect, we need to correct it. And we're not, it's unfortunately, the errors that happened that revealed to us where the rules are off. So that's my high level. Answer, if you want to, I'll, I'll stop there and let you decide if you want a more technical response from, we have Aaron Covington from Alvarez and Marcel, or we can just leave it at that.
No, I would love maybe just a little bit more about kind of like what it's looking like for us to get there. I mean, I think the takeaway I heard from what you're saying is that. We are trying to kind of backtrack to figure out the root cause of the issue. And then as we continue to work back. We'll be able to kind of get to that nexus point of the problem and then address kind of everything as a whole moving forward. But. Until we get to that root cause point, we're kind of fixing problems as they arise.
Yeah, I can take that. So just to put kind of a headline over some of the comments that Dr. Wayne said is that. SFUSD has a very complex operating environment, whether it's work rules, whether it's processes. And so the system, when we look at how it's configured and the processes that are defined around the system, we've, we've identified places. Every step of the way where there's a fix that's required, whether it's a process fix, whether it's a training fix, whether it's a configuration fix. And so, so it takes time to work through these issues. The, the, the second part of your question, I'm sorry, Kevin, the.
It was just about, I guess, like the steps we're going to discover the root causes of those issues.
Yeah, so right now I can report from this first day of the, the, the Command Center or the corrective action plan being stood up. So we've got, we've got our, our team focused really on two broad efforts. One is a case management function that's working on addressing the backlog of payroll tickets. Speaking to employees, responding to employees, understanding their issues and resolving the issues. From there, the bulk of the remaining part of the correction of action team is really focused on preventing new or solving, identifying the root cause. And putting in place systemic changes that are focused on systems changes, process changes. And so that, the systems and process changes that we are aware of today, it's a lengthy list. Of systems and process changes that are required. And so what we are doing is prioritizing. Those items that we believe at this moment have the greatest impact on employees and focus on. Executing the changes associated with those issues that are having the greatest impact on employees. And as we get this corrective action team further up and operating, we'll report out specifically on what those issues are that are prioritizing when we come to future meetings.
I, I guess it's just one more thing. I guess, is there, is there any information on what should have been a place when we started down the process of kind of switching systems? That wasn't in place or that in hindsight that we, that that should have been kind of set up or in place? And and what part are we in? And I think figuring out like that part of the story.
Um, so a couple of observations that we've had so far, some of the things that should have been in place. You know, I think implementing a system during COVID is, is an extremely challenging environment. And so.
You need to turn your microphone on.
Sorry.
Press your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, implementing, I'm sorry, I'm paying. The, the implementing a new system in an environment where people are working remotely is very challenging. It makes it more difficult to more clearly define the processes and business requirements that are critical to a successful implementation. So I think the COVID had an impact on the ability of the team to come together and to fire, define business requirements. On that note. The, the under definition or inadequate definition of business requirements is a key reason. Or better definition of the requirements should have been in place before a system went live. In addition, what we have identified is that there wasn't adequate testing of those business requirements. So. Had there been a more fulsome testing environment, some of these issues could have been prevented before the system went live. And so, and then when the system went live, when there were issues that were immediately identified, a good practice is to. Revert back to your old system. And so those require, those preparations were not adequately made to then revert back to that old system. And so I don't, the SFUSD, I don't think appreciated or understood how. Deep and broad the issues were at the time of implementation. And so it's only now that we're ten months in that we understand the, or. Understand the volume of issues that have occurred since the system went live in January.
Commissioner Alexander, and then we'll wrap up for the discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to reflect on, I really appreciate Vice President Bogus's questions and their responses. And I think. You know, there's, there's, there's a million technical issues and I really appreciate A and M's work and our staff's work in trying to address these technical issues. And kind of to your point, it's coming to you just made is. I just want to say in public that this was a failure of leadership, right? And I think if we're looking for blame, it can go all around. I mean, the previous boards, this board, the, you know. There, there's lots of, we go back years, right? In terms of. And staff, there, there, this was a failure of, of leadership in terms of we, we failed our employees and by doing that, we failed our students. And so I just think, I want to say, one of the things I do appreciate about what's happening right now is there's a recognition that we need to change our culture. It's not just a technical. Problem. The fact that we didn't do the testing, the fact that we didn't do the preparation, the fact that it took us ten months to figure out. The staff to figure out what was going on. Those are, those are leadership failures, right? And I think. I just want to say that and name it because I actually think that that's being named internally and I want the public to know that we understand that and that we are. Taking action. I mean, this command center is, is not just a, a technical fix. It's actually a different way of doing business. It's saying, everyone's going to be in a room. We're going to work together and we're not gonna, we're going to make sure that there's, there's people bottom lining things, that there's accountability, right? I don't know if you want to speak this more super tenderly, but I. I just feel like there's, there's a shift happening that's important that's going to lead to this being solved. I just want to name that.
No, thank you for recognizing that. And you're, and you're correct that. The leadership component of this is needing to, to, you know, be clear on who's responsible for what and have that there be the accountability that there's the follow-up. And. What complexity can often hide is where we're not taking the appropriate action to resolve the issues, right? Because well, it's complex. What can we do? And that. So we share the complete, we, we, you know, say that this is a complex system as the explanation for the why. But it's not the excuse for why we can't resolve this. And, and, and yeah, so that, that culture shift has been critical. And that's. Again, the, the clearing the state of emergency communicated, we need to work with decisiveness, speed. And a focus on results that is different than how we've been operating before. And, you know, again, not through any. Ill intentions, everybody's been working hard, but now we're working hard with, again, clearer lines of responsibility and accountability, which is a, is a big difference.
Commissioner Shiu, and then I'll have a closing comments.
I'll be very brief. I just want to reiterate something I think I said at the very first board meeting. When we talked about the empower issue with the last superintendent. And my recommendation at that time, and I'll say it again, is don't come back with, we can't. Come back with how are we going to do it and what we need? Because we're the ones in this room who can decide, remember that? We're the decision makers. We can decide if you need something to make it happen. Let us know. Don't come back and say you can't do it. Tell us what you need and how are you going to do it?
I still just want to note, you know, we've been having conversations around, particularly as we look at the root cause, but also the case management. And I just wanted to, Erin. To acknowledge and feel free to add to this if you're not conveying it well, but just the acceleration, right? How important it is. That it's clear that this with Dr. Wayne, under his leadership from the board. How important it is around the acceleration with decisiveness and preciseness so that. While we're accelerating, is that because we're very clear about what those fixes are needed and how we're going to get there?
Thank you. And both appreciate your comments, Commissioner Shiu and President Lamb, because we. Do expect to come back to say we will need, you know, here's what we need to either continue the fix or accelerate it. You know, we still. You, one of the reasons we reassign staff is because we have not been able to fill vacancies. We continue not to be able to fill vacancies and. Have used some of the salary savings to help bring in this temporary staff. I, you know, reported last quarter how much we saved that was going to this and we're getting to the end of another quarter. Where we will unfortunately have savings and will need to, to bring in additional support. But I, I. Do appreciate the board's leadership in, you know, again, challenging us to say, tell us what you need because. We're committed to making this right by our employees. So thank you for that support and we'll be transparent about what those needs are.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to move to agenda item F. Which is the advisory committee reports for the African American Parent Advisory Council Annual Board of Education presentation. And like to call upon Marisha Robinson.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Commissioners, Vice President Bogus, President Lamb, our Superintendent Dr. Wayne. Our student delegates and everyone else at the dais tonight. My name is Marisha Robinson and. I'm the daughter of Monique and Maurice, the wife of Ray and the mother of Zachary, Zapriel, Zariah, Zuri and Zaire. I'm also the program manager for the district's African American Parent Advisory Council and a member of the ALI team. Annually, AIPAC has given the opportunity to present before you to give an overview of our past and present efforts. Towards supporting black students and families in the district. This year, our theme is Sankofa. Translated from the Twi language of the Akon people in Ghana, it means to go back and to fetch it. To retrieve knowledge and wisdom from our past. And we hope that tonight's presentation will serve as a reminder. That whatever black families and students have been stripped of or prevented access to will be reclaimed, revived and preserved for the future. Now it is my honor to turn it over to the amazing AIPAC leadership team who will walk you through tonight's presentation. Their leadership team members presenting for the very first time tonight and we are also proud of them. But before they begin, we will play a video. Next slide, please.
It's playing on my end, but it's not playing. You want me to see if I can play it from up, from this one?
Yeah, we just exit out of the.
Yeah. Stop the share.
Share the new, whatever she shared with you there. She also, the song's probably not going to work.
That's a good song right there. You guys should play that for your little ones. Mine have learned consistently from that. While we go ahead and gather ourselves together for the videos.
I don't think it's gonna work.
It's not gonna work? Okay. It's okay, technical difficulties, and that's all right. Um, when you all have an opportunity, please take a chance to go, um, have a look at this video and understand the greeting from the Messiah Warrior Tribe and how are the children? The Messiah Warriors greeted themselves, um, when they came into each other's presence with this greeting to acknowledge how they were doing in the present day and what, and how their future would be going. And even the strongest and the biggest of the warriors would come to each other and say this affirmation or this greeting, and how are the children? And it is a, um, way to address the current climate and situations that are happening. And if the children are well, then we know that all things are well in the village. And so now I'll pass it on to our leader, uh, Rihanna Batiste.
So hello, everybody. Sorry, this chair is heavier than I thought. My name is Rihanna Batiste, and I'm an AIPAC member since 2013. And my daughter attends George Washington High School where she is a senior. Tonight, we acknowledge the presence of our ancestors by using the greeting of the Messiah Warriors. And how are the children? We dream that one day your response will be, all the children are well. Due to the time restraint, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Wait, is that it? No, go back. I'm sorry. Okay. Due to the time restraint for this presentation, we ask that you put your attention on the screen and on your printouts. This slide deck is available on Board Docs and will be shared in the AIPAC monthly newsletter. Our AIPAC prides itself on providing a forum to listen to the voices and experience of African American families, educate ourselves, one another, and our partners on the best ways to support and serve African American students and advocate when necessary to ensure academic excellence for our babies. Our mission, as seen on the screen, can be captured in three verbs. Listen, educate, and advocate. Tonight, we will share AIPAC's journey from inception till now, our wins, our areas for growth, and our 2022 goals and priorities. Let's begin with the AIPAC journey. Next slide, please.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Mary Lahori, and I'm a mom of two girls, one that attends Gateway Middle School and the other who attends Yloa Elementary School. Um, as you know, AIPAC is a parent-led organization founded in 2013. AIPAC is supported by the African American Achievement and Leadership Initiative via Marisha Robinson, right over there, and works in partnership with many district departments, community-based organizations, and a host of other district advisory groups. In 2016, AIPAC expanded past the district level, eventually into 15 school sites in SFUSD, hosted our first LPAC, Elcap, uh, feedback session, created the first ever ceremony to celebrate Black seniors in SFUSD called Reach Higher: College Signing Day, and introduced our first ever operating guide and leadership structure. In 2018, led the charge to shift how schools celebrate Black History Month through our Black History Month Toolkit Literacy Campaign, distributed books to Black students and families to build home libraries with books that affirm them. Black students and families had these, uh, resources. And we also, we talked about the understandings and the realities of African American families and the danger of a single story and a colla, and collaborated with city partners to host multiple Black family days across the city. In 2019, AIPAC designed a system to hold SFUSD accountable by tracking AIPAC Board of Education recommendations, advocacy and implementation of SFUSD's policies and procedures. We partnered with Special Education Community Advisory Council and others to host Learning While Black in SFUSD, a two-part series about the history of the Larry P versus SFUSD lawsuit and the disproportionality of Black children being referred to special education. In 2020, when a global pandemic shut down the world, AIPAC transitioned immediately to charting the path for virtual meetings amongst advisory groups and collaborated with city partners to support families throughout unprecedented times. AIPAC focused on advocating for real-time needs for access to information and opportunities that were culturally responsive, while also hosting town halls and continuing our literacy campaign with book pickups. In 2021, ensuring family, Black family voice was included when the district returned to in-person learning, called out the projected and immediate impact COVID-19 for Black families and uplifted the digital divide. COVID did not create an opportunity gap. It shined a light on the systemic inequities that already existed. In 2022, greater collaboration with city and county partners reclaiming our seats at the table, calling out anti-Black behaviors, speech, and policies that act as barriers to SFUSD, providing quality and equitable education to our children. With over 10 regular monthly meetings for, um, our family gatherings, 25 site-based APACs, growth in our leadership team, what you see here, and the creation of resources to better systematize our work. AIPAC is proud of the work we have done thus far and excited for the ways we will impact the lives of students and families in the future. Our greatest 2022 highlight has been our little free libraries. Next slide.
Hi, my name is Joshae Jones, and I'm the executive assistant for AIPAC. I'm a mother to a toddler, and I have one on the way. I would like to leave the next part of this presentation with a quote. Give a child a book, and they will be happy. Give them a library, and they'll be literate. And that, that's quoted from the founder of Access Books Bay Area. AIPAC has partnered with Access Books Bay Area to bring little free libraries to some of San Francisco's most underserved communities. AIPAC's little free libraries are strategically placed in locations that serves San Francisco's diverse population of Black students and families. The goal of offering these free grab-and-go books is to truly build community, inspire readers, and increase access to books with authors, illustrators, and protagonists that reflect our communities and, and its rich history. To complement our efforts, we have joined the Read and Color Initiative, first launched in Minneapolis following the murder of Mr. George Floyd. Read and Color supplies books that provide perspectives on racism, social justice, celebrates BIPOC and LGBTQ voices, and incorporates experiences from all identities for all readers. AIPAC provides additional books for every little free library through our partnerships with SF Public Library Redistributing Center and the Children's Books Project. Each library installation is celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Our little free libraries exist at community centers, school campuses, and residences in the Bayview Hunters Point and soon Patrol Hill and in the Ping Uan housing complexes. This is just one of many ways AIPAC will continue to bridge the literacy gap and strengthen the school-to-home connection in our communities. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Sienna Dunn. I am the mother of two, one who attends Clara Lillian Thaw. AIPAC serves many functions, including what we are doing here today, advising the Board of Education. We also host monthly meetings, provide direct advocacy with and for Black families when needed, support site-based affinity groups at our school sites, and we send out monthly updates via our newsletter to keep families and partners up to date of opportunities, resources, and information that may be relevant to them. Next slide, please. Community partners. AIPAC has continuously partnered with city departments and community and faith-based organizations. Over the last two years, we have been physically sponsored by the Dream Keepers Initiative, Brighter Future, and Salesforce. Our operating budget has gone from $20,000 to over $400,000. We have listed some names and groups on the slide. This is not an exhaustive list, but we know that the work of AIPAC Family Partnerships takes all of us. These partners make up the AIPAC Village. Next slide, please. Each year, AIPAC evolves and grows. We do that by reviewing, um, community feedback and input, aligning with SFUSD goals and outcomes, and using data to inform our priorities and goals. When reflecting back on the 2021 school year, AIPAC made a greater push for direct transparency and to increase AIPAC's responsiveness to advocacy requests. Our wins for the 2021 year include a revised operating guide and the release of the AIPAC Implementation Guide. Our implementation gla, got glide res, uh, release happened this past Saturday. Educators, community members, and families joined us at Booker T. Washington Community Center for a day of community building facilitated by Be the Change Consulting. We are finding that there is still adversity despite engagement to build safe affinity spaces for Black families and students across the district. This continues to be an area of growth. Next slide, please. Our 2022, 2023 goals and priorities are to partner with CBOs and district departments and to enhance literacy efforts and campaigns, increase families' access to wellness supports in SFUSD and throughout San Francisco, strengthen families across the opportunities for financial stability.
Okay, next slide, please. Oh, sorry, that wasn't life. I keep doing that. Okay, so this slide is a representation of AIPAC's recommendations over the past years. This year, we do not come before you with recommendations as we have made those in the past, and we have not seen real follow-up or response to many of them. Instead, we come asking you to go back and look at what we have recommended in the past, things that we believe will help produce the student outcomes that we collectively are seeking. We also ask that you stand true to your commitment to honor the community's non-negotiables while implementing the goals. That includes equity and excellence for each and every, remain social justice-driven, and stand with those who are most impacted by systems of oppression, for example, Black children, and actively change those systems within our districts. Not make major decisions without utilizing a process. That includes a meaningful consultation with the parents, guardians, students, and staff who we will be impacted by those decisions. And remember, nothing for us without us. Final slide, please.
Hello, my name is Alicia Dangerfield. I'm a mother of three of, and I have a son that attends Demme, and he absolutely loves that school. Uh, as we close out, we'd like to invite, invite you to our monthly meetings on Thursdays, on Thursday, November 13th, 17th, at 5:30 PM, Eliola, Harvard Auditorium. Thank you for this time. We look forward to the day we can all, we can all can, we all can ask in how we, how are the children and our collective response, how our collective's response will be, are the children are well? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much to our AIPAC leaders. At this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment, please.
Thank you, President Lamb. We have four speakers in person tonight. I will call your names so you can go ahead and line up at the podium. First is Jonathan Butler, Alita Fisher, Virginia Marshall, and Reverend Brown.
Let's allocate 90 seconds each speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to everyone, to our board, and my name is, uh, Dr. Jonathan Butler, and I serve as the first vice president for the National Association of Advanced Color People San Francisco Branch and a faith leader. And I just stand in support of the presentation that was made, uh, just a few minutes ago. And, um, just because of the time, I want to share uh, opportunity that we have in terms of ensuring that our, our children are on par, back on track on their, their literacy. Uh, one program in particular is a national program called the Children's Defense Fund Freedom School. So it's a very, um, well-known program across the country, scientifically proven to work. And the mention of this program is to ensure that every child has a healthy start, a moral start, uh, a fair start and a safe start that helps them to become successful as adults. One thing I know as a researcher is that a lot of times, uh, because of the inability of a system to ensure that our kids have the education that they need, it leads to, um, later in life challenges in terms of our health. And so at this moment, this is a crisis situation that we're dealing with, especially with our, our Black kids, and it's literally killing us as a community. And we need to be able to step in. I think that the Freedom School is one way that we can do that, um, because it's a proven model to work. And it's a low-hanging fruit. It's something that is happening this particular summer, uh, for our students. And so I just want to be mindful that for everybody in the room, that, you know, we are all as important as doctors right now. Because if we don't save our kids, we can't save our community, and it's up to us to do that. So thank you.
Good evening to President Lamb, Vice President Bogus, Board Commissioners, Assistant Wayne, Student Delegates, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. Uh, habari gudi, AIPAC. Habari gudi means what's the news in Swahili. The news is on this night in the city of St. Francis, you all scored a home run. Give yourselves a round of applause, a pat on the back, yay, phenomenal report. Anytime moms and dads can come out to a board meeting, bring their babies in arms to present to us. You hit a home run. So I thank you for that. One December 17th in 2013, when you all were having your opening event, it was my job to go shopping for that gala celebration. And people said to me in the supermarket, are you having a party? Yes, it was not for me, but for some great parents. And when you first started at Harvard, I would go downstairs and open up the room and say, okay, I'll be there for support. But Dr. Dr. Wayne, they didn't need me. I would open up the door, listen, and run back upstairs and do my work. From that very beginning, these phenomenal group of parents have done a Herculean job in preparing agendas, looking for research, and looking for best practices for African American children. And we say, thank you, and please continue. So it's been a great li, listening to the slides, watching the slides. But I've had a personal first chair sitting and watching you all and doing what I can to support. So thank you so much. Ashay, Ashay.
I have a baby. I'm not letting go. Are you kidding?
Hi, everyone. My name is Alita Fisher, and I would just like to say thank you so much to the leadership team. With our parent leaders like this, the children will indeed be fine. Thank you very much. If the district implements with fidelity the recommendations that you find in this report, if we implement with fidelity the guardrails that we have promised to implement just a few weeks ago. So thank you all for your time. Thank you for being a model for the rest of us advisory committees. Your collaborative leadership, the way that you run engaging meetings, even over Zoom, has been a model for the rest of us to follow. So thank you all. And, um, you might get your baby back at the end of the night. I'm not sure yet. All right. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Amos Brown. Eighty-one years old. Been around here a long time. And the only thing I want to say tonight is that this board can demonstrate its commitment to the well-being of the sons and daughters of Africa by passing a resolution, supporting reparations. Reparations will be presented in 2023. The best feeling. And please don't say you can't do it. We're a supervisor of plans for that resolution. I think it would be a great thing, a grand thing. And while the hell we gone through, it's owed to African Americans to have reparations for we were denied the right to receive education. Years were cut off, fingers were torn asunder. And even one Baptist preacher, John Mercer, developed in 1870. developed in 1877. The school in Mississippi Dina, it's called, in St. Louis and Missouri, it was against the law, the Black people didn't even read. He went to Foxville, and they pummeled over to Illinois and founded in Illinois the first institution for higher education of Black folks in the state of Missouri, which became Lincoln University. So my friends, I beg you, I beseech you, show your fear, and you understand and feel our pain, and pay us back with a resolution supporting those reparations in the city and county of San Francisco.
That concludes in-person public comment, President Lamb.
Okay, we'll now go to virtual. Each speaker will, please raise your hand if you care to speak to this item. Each speaker will have 90 seconds. We'll have a total. President Lamb, what is the total time that we'll have?
Right speaker.
Okay. Okay, each speaker will have 90 minutes, 90 seconds to speak. And I'll call in groups. So the first group is Kathy, Asa, Chris, Teresa. Again, that's Kathy, Chris, sorry, Kathy, Asa, Chris, Teresa. Kathy, go ahead, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Each speaker will have 90 seconds.
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante la mano si tienen comentario público. Tenemos para cada participante 90 segundos. Gracias.
If you want to continue the question of the topic, to express the public opinion, you can now say goodbye. Everyone has 90 seconds. Thank you.
Kathy, go ahead, please. Kathy? Asa?
Hi, I'm here. This is time for general public comment, correct? Or is it, are we commenting on the previous presentation?
We, we are commenting. This is the time to comment on the presentation that was just shared.
Okay, time for general comment will be after this or later?
It will be later, a couple items later.
Okay, then I'll unmute myself and wait for that.
Okay, thank you. So the next group is Betty, Kai, Selena. Betty, Kai, and Selena. Betty, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. I just want to say to the AIPAC group, great job, great presentation. And to the board, please go ahead with their recommendations that they have been recommending for years now. I think that it definitely will help close the achievement gap or at least get close to closing it as well as providing equity for our students. Thank you again, AIPAC group. You guys rock.
Thank you. Kai?
Hi, me and my group were confused as to when student public comment is, but I do want to say thank you for that presentation. And we will wait till then to speak on our issue. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kai. If you're a student, you can. Student testimony will come after the general public comment. So this will only be public comment for the AIPAC report. Selena?
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I wish I could be there tonight in person, but I'm feeling a little bit under weather. So thank you for having this Zoom opportunity. And I want to congratulate the AIPAC, you know, for the presentation. And I also wanted to look forward, you know, with AIPAC, working with the PAC. And I believe there's also a Chinese Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC, together so we can, you know, have an opportunity with increased communication for the best of our student and how we can move for, you know, move forward and help our students in SFUSD. So I just wanted to commend that. And I've been learning a little bit, so, 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 so what he, I think, astante, which is thank you. So I wanted to say that, thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Parents for Public Schools.
Hi, good evening. This is Vanessa Marrero from Parents of Public Schools. I'm the Executive Director. I wanted to first thank the leadership of AIPAC. They have a new director, new program staff. You're doing an incredible job, and Parents of Public Schools stands behind all of your work. We want to make sure that the board is going to really think and look at these previous recommendations, and we call upon you to review them in a way that would be able to implement this year. So please use Parents of Public Schools as a partner in the work that you are doing with AIPAC and others, and review the recommendations and have a plan forward to implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our virtual public comment for this item. Thank you. And before I open up to comments from board members, I also wanted to have Dr. Wayne respond and set some remarks.
Yeah, thank you, Board President Lamb, and thank you, AIPAC leadership, for sharing. It's good to see you in person. I know we got to meet via Zoom, and I met some of you in person. And I just wanted to speak to, you know, I just, I finished my listening and learning in last board meeting, shared my report, and one of the key takeaways in the short term was the need to rebuild trust. And so just wanted to say, I, you know, I hear you that, and really appreciate the, to me, bold statement of saying, "We're not bringing forward new recommendations. We've made our recommendations, but they haven't, it doesn't seem like the district has engaged with them. And so we're looking for you to meaningfully engage with them." And so I hear that, and looking them over, like I see, you know, I'll share just a real response that, see, in 2019, individual learning plans were put forward. So I know there's discussion happening about those, but it's like discussion as if it's just beginning when you shared this three years ago. And so there, you know, want to make sure there's follow-up both AIPAC, but also as we're working on our LCAP, this is where those recommendations should be reflected. And so we do have a new LCAP coordinator, and we'll be going through a process to make sure that the community's voices are heard. And, and what's important is, you know, we can't do, and then we can do anything, we can't do everything, but that we're clear and transparent about what we are doing to follow through on our commitments to our families, our putting forward recommendations, and what we're doing, most importantly, to support our students to meet our goals that we're going to be talking about later tonight. So in the end, I know the board is committed to supporting this work. I do really see it as, you know, as a leader of the district, our responsibility to make sure there is that follow-up and communication. So thank you again for, for sharing and making it clear what you need from us to really show our commitment to supporting your families and your, your students.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open up for any comments, questions for AIPAC leaders. Commissioner Weissman Ward.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and thank you to the AIPAC leadership team. Really grateful for you all being here tonight with families in tow on a Tuesday evening, and grateful for the work that you are doing and the commitment to our African-American students and families. One of the things that struck me in, in reading this report and hearing it tonight was, I, I'm really excited because I think that there is, what you all are saying, which is not new, I do think is reflected in, in a lot of our vision values and guardrails, which was mentioned. And I, I think part of the work that we're going to need to be doing and that we need to be held accountable to it is making sure that the community's input is in fact reflected in how we are setting up our, our next steps as we work to achieve our vision and values and to make sure that we have these guardrails in place. A couple specific things where I see a lot of overlap, it, you know, the, the slide on the library, like this is fantastic, and we, one of our goals is increasing literacy. And so the idea, how do we work together? How do we collaborate? How do we learn from you all? How do we support the work that you're doing in community to make sure that we are working not in silos, but working together to establish and reach these higher literacy goals? I also, the slides about the 2022 and 2023 goals and priorities in terms of partnering with CBOs, you know, we are working on, we're going to be building out more community schools. And so I, I see a lot of work that we can do in partnership with AIPAC to support the work that we're doing as a district around our community schools program. So I know you all have been doing this work for a while, and I want to acknowledge and respect that and look forward to leaning into the expertise and work that you've been doing in community and, and, and learn from that and, and make sure that we can reflect that from, from the work on the board. So thank you very much.
Vice President Bogus?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much to the presenters. Thank you for all your hard work, all the families who are engaged as well. I think my initial question, and I guess whoever is best to respond, if you could, I, I think you shared some in the presentation, but I guess like your assessment as AIPAC or just kind of collectively as, as folks who are Black families in the district and working with Black families in the district, how has the status of Black families kind of changed since AIPAC has kind of been established? And just kind of, I think like whether or not you feel like you've seen the district in those years adjust and change at all, or if you feel that it is, it's status quo, understanding the issue around the recommendations. And I think that's something us as a board is taking seriously and really trying to change the way that we're structured, knowing that the board doesn't have the ability to implement recommendations directly, but really figuring out how we hold the superintendent and his leadership team accountable to it, and how we're using the evaluation process of the superintendent to ensure all the goals are being met. But I guess I'm just curious if you could just talk a little bit more about that and just kind of, kind of how you see the, the struggle that Black families and students are facing in the district.
So I think one partnership that we've always had was educating our families after listening, and that goes hand in hand with advocacy, right? And so I think our biggest strength that we had is through the IP process because that's something that we've been strategically trying to interrupt because too many of our babies are given the label of emotionally disturbed, right? And we all know, and as I learned, that that label can hinder them for future career development and whatever they want to do in their life, right? If, if you label this child as emotionally disturbed. And so we have really, really worked to educate our families to understand the IP process, to understand that if you do not agree with the assessment that's given, that you can go to your own doctor, and they can have it listed as other health impairment, to where they will list the doctor's recommendations. And so that's been a very big win for us, is making sure our families understand their rights and their responsibilities throughout the IP process. And so when something is wrong, they can call it out, and we do go with them during these meetings so that there is a village with them and not an individual, because it can be very daunting to get a stack of papers like this that you're expected to read over in less than, what, a 10-minute review of it? And it's so much jargon in there. I always call it SFUSD ease. There's no way unless you work for the district that you're going to understand it, right? We've also encouraged parents to really, really ensure that they understand it from start to finish. And if there's anything that they disagree with, and if there's anything that's not being followed, to challenge it all the way up to, if necessary, taking legal action, right? Because it's our babies, right? And we are entrusting the district with our babies. And so we are making sure that our parents know that the district has the responsibility to honor every letter of the IP if they're necessary for a natural IP, right? And if they're not, to challenge it if they're not, right? And to not just accept any label that's giving, being given to your child. Because as parents, we understand that we are the first educators, and we do know our babies better than anybody else, right? So if there's a struggle, we can explain that. If there's truly, truly need for help, we can also make sure they get them that as well.
I'll just add that, thank you, Leonda, for providing that overview from an advocate's standpoint. But from a programmatic standpoint, the work that we've been doing with CECS, right? Which is the comprehension, coordinating, early intervention, S, what's the S, y'all? Plan, that speaks to the disruption, disrupting the patterns of overly identifying African-American students as either emotionally disturbed or other health impairments, but disrupting that pattern and those systems. AIPAC has been a solid voice in building that plan, both for the current plan and the previous plan, which we are working on now currently for SFUSD, as well as having a seat at that table in bringing other community members and other families in to be voices as educational partners in that process. And that is where you will also see a very small population of families and students be able to experience what an ILP is, something that AIPAC instated and instituted way back when in our recommendations, 2016, 2017. But that is also a recommendation that our CECS plan and stakeholders are using as a, who's something to disrupt the pattern and the root causes of over-representation of Black families in special education. I'll also note that the way that AIPAC has increased sense of belonging within the district and how we noticed that when our families were taking the culture and climate survey and the data that was available to us, how they felt in their time and space at that moment at their school sites and what that looked like to them, and how it was our job to advocate on their beheaths and with them to create spaces that gave them a deeper sense of belonging. There was significant increases from Black family sense of belonging from 2020 to the 22 survey. The population size was a little bit smaller, but there still was an increase in that. And that is another way that AIPAC has impacted the trajectory and the experiences for Black students and families within the district.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and again to the AIPAC leaders. I want to appreciate, we held, the board held our listening and learning sessions on the value schools and guardrails back in September, and you all had your retreat all morning, and then in the afternoon, you rolled right into spending time with the board. And really, thank you for your work over the years and really how much it means to really hear directly from families of how the district must be accountable for those goals and priorities that we set for our African-American students. I had a question around, really thrilled to see the list of community partners specifically around the African-American early childhood educators and the Black infant maternal health. You know, something I've been thinking about is around the transition between preschool to now transitional kindergarten, kindergarten. And often what I've heard from, from our family, community providers is around, you have such a high touch point between our early childhood educators and working with the child, working with the family, and then they come to SFUSD, and oftentimes, they're kind of left to kind of navigate on their own. And really wanted to hear from you all around what some opportunities may be there around the transition between preschool to the kindergarten and how we can continue that sense of belonging and welcoming for families.
So currently, our AIPAC leader, Hope Williams, is not, was not able to make it with us, but that is the seat at the table that she serves in our Black Infant and Maternal Health work that AIPAC is doing with the community and city. She's led such things as our pop-up village. She's advocated for families, there's a term for who deliver their babies early, so our little premies that come into the world, and also just an all-around experience that doesn't end in death for a Black woman given birth in the hospital. And so Hope has been our leader that has sat on that committee and could speak best to it. But also, we have looped in the work that she is doing with some, with our 2020 goal of just overall cultural wellness, right? And then for the work for our African-American, the early childhood educators. So that program or group was born pretty recently, and they meet regularly, they have a meeting every week. The work that they would like to partner with and do with AIPAC is they are often filled with those who provide.
is they are often filled with, um, those who provide care for their babies at their homes. So their place of residence and not, um, institution, not, uh, places or preschools or daycare places. And they want to provide sort of a, a toolkit or, um, a folder that says, I have given my baby to you with all of these gifts. Please build upon them, right? So how are we connecting? The preschool journey that not only happens in our big centers and our regular preschools, but also at our home centers. And how do we connect and those gifts and talents and share them with the educators that are receiving them so that they can build on them and not diminish them from them? Um, another project that we're looking forward to working with the, um, early childhood educators on as well is, um, they held this unique STEM frenzy event. And, um, just partnering with them to showcase all of the different things that can happen in science and technology, um, with African-American engineers.
Thank you. All right. Can I make a comment about that? Um, what I heard you say was around the pre-K to kindergarten transition. So we're talking elementary school. That's a big jump from preschool to elementary school. And I think it really goes back to kind of what we talked about, creating a sense of, um, sense of connection, right? When we're thinking about our, our kinder students and our, and our families and our parents, do they walk through the door feeling like they belong? And so I, I think, yes, it's very intentional about the outreach that needs to happen when they go from preschool to kindergarten. But I'm thinking in terms of a systems-wide issue, like, do we have an AIPAC? Do we have, uh, books that reflect, um, our children? Do we have, um, curriculum that reflects our, our history or our, our, uh, the history here? Um, so I think it always goes back to not just the, the intention of that transition, but like school-wide, like what are we doing? District-wide, what are we doing to continue to support black students and families? So, um, I, I appreciate Marisha and Hope Williams, their, their efforts, but also looking at what are we doing to really continue to support the APACs at each site? Um, and to, uh, create leadership opportunities even for our black students as young as kindergarten up, so. Thank you again so much for your presentation and your leadership. At this time, we will go into Agenda G, which is a public comment. And this is a public comment on non-agenda items. Mr. Steele, how many?
Yes, we have three in-person public commenters, uh, Karina Wong, Lydia Visser, uh, Remy Adfray, and forgive me if I'm mispronouncing. You can come to the podium. Again, Karina Wong, uh, Lydia Visser and Remy Adfray. One, one moment. I'm sorry, President Lam. Okay. You have one minute. You can go ahead.
Okay. Hola, buenas tardes. My name is Karina Huang and I'm a fifth grade Spanish emergent teacher at Leonard Flynn Elementary School. This year at our school, we've had our social worker position unfilled. And yesterday our administration was notified that we're going to have a half-time so- social worker. And that's just not enough for our school. This in my classroom, I have at least five students who have had difficult integration journeys and are still dealing with that trauma. I have one student living in a single-room occupancy home who comes to school needing to process what she sees. I have many students whose parents report they have crippling anxiety at bedtime or in the morning when they come to school. And I have two students who have missed at least half the days of school this year. Last year, our social worker provided a lot of services for my students, including one-on-one counseling, small group, social emotional skills lessons, direct connection to resources and families. And she was an integral part of the team setting up behavior plans, attendance contracts and other systems of student support. This is a huge gap we're going to have. And as you know, when we have holes, the holes get bigger. So I really just implore you to reconsider the allocation of our social worker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Lydia. I'm a parent at Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. I just want to acknowledge there's a whole group of us here tonight. So thank you so much for you all for being here. Oh, I have my notes. Yeah, we wanted, um, we would really like the district to work with EPC to ensure that Harvey Milk's second kindergarten be reopened for enrollment during the lottery, the first round of the lottery this year. Last year, during the first round, 13 families who we know of ranked Harvey Milk one through five. Um, nine of those families ranked us first and they were denied acceptance to our school because EPC had already closed our second kindergarten class. Uh, we want to ensure that parents who rank Harvey Milk as their second through 10th choice get the opportunity to be placed at our school. If they do not get their first choice, our school cannot survive without two kindergarten classes. We have a newly renovated program paid for by taxpayer dollars. And we would like the opportunity to fill these classes. We're the only elementary school in the Castro. And we have a unique focus on civil rights curriculum and the only school in the district to have an edible social studies program. So we'd like clarity and transparency regarding the criteria used for lottery decisions this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Remy. I'm also a parent from a second grader at, uh, Harvey Milk Civil Rights Academy. I just wanted to second, uh, Lydia's, um, pitch for reopening a second, uh, kindergarten class. In fact, my, uh, second child will be, uh, in kindergarten, uh, next year. Um, Harvey Milk is a, a, a special school, uh, uh, you know, a special community of educators, teachers, parents, uh, but also very tightly integrated in the neighborhood of the Castro. Um, it serves the, the Castro neighborhood, but also, uh, as, as many other schools in San Francisco, the whole city. It's on the bus line from SFUSD from Bayview through the Mission to the Castro. It's also uh, very close to the Castro, um, immunity station, which deserves a lot of the city. As, as Lydia mentioned, we, we just underwent an extensive renovation. We have a brand new playground, a brand new library. Uh, we'd love to reopen a second kindergarten class and, and, uh, continue this, uh, supporting this vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did have one more speaker, Virginia Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. I wanted to add also for the month of November. We were out of school this past Friday because of Veterans Day. There are many men and women who served our country. So we should always recognize Veterans Day with the staff, with the parents and with the veterans who serve us, men of whom are homeless, men of whom sadly have some mental health issues, men of whom have no food to eat. So they serve our country well. Our children need to know that. Also, we had walked, take a walk to school day in the South, especially during the civil rights movement. Many children talk with their grandparents who had to walk to school. So when we celebrate Walk to School Day in San Francisco, please be very mindful of the civil rights movement. Thank you so much.
That concludes in-person public comment.
Please raise your hand if you care to give your, uh, public comment. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese?
Buenas noches. Por favor, levante sus manos si desea añadir un comentario público. Para cada participante, se les voy a otorgar un minuto solamente. Gracias.
We have 23 speakers, so what you will take those 23 for one minute each. Okay. So I will call, uh, speakers again in groups. So the first group is Asa, Danielle, Kathy, Kai and Autumn. Again, Asa, Danielle, Kathy, Kai and Autumn. Asa, go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Asa. I go by they had them. There's pronouns. I am a teacher in an elementary school at Gradon Elementary. I teach a high-needs autism-focused special day class for third to fifth grade students. My program began the year with two para positions unfilled. And now we have seven positions unfilled three months into the school year. That is one-third of the total paras that we need to be functioning as a special ed program at our school. In addition to this, on any given day, we can expect that one to two of our paras are going to be out sick and, out sick, and there are no subs for those paras. That means every morning we're scrambling to find staff to keep our students safe, to serve them their minutes. And for me, learning and teaching is at the bottom of my pile. It's fallen to the bottom for me and is incredibly frustrating as a teacher to not be able to teach lessons to my students because I don't have staff in my classroom. You are further disadvantaging our students with disabilities, our students with the highest needs. You're creating further inequities by not filling para positions in our schools. You're exacerbating inequity through this leadership or lack of leadership. Para educators, classified staff are just as important as classroom teachers. They are not optional or a bonus. They are essential and we need those roles to be filled as soon as possible. And the best way to have para educators is to pay them a competitive wage for living in this area. This is essential work. This is crucial work. Para's dive in and do physical demanding, important teaching work with our students every day. So I hope that you will consider that as we're going into, um, negotiating salaries, that para, para educators need to be paid a competitive wage that we can retain these teachers and hire new teachers because they're essential roles. I cannot do my job as a teacher without a full para educator staff. And you are well on track to losing more and more employees if you do not fill these roles. Thank you.
Thank you, Asa. Danielle?
Hello, my name is Danielle and I'm a parent at Flynn Elementary School. And, um, I want to echo what our teacher, who, um, I'm grateful who was there in person was saying. We've recently been informed that we've been assigned a part-time LCSW instead of the full-time social worker that our school has always had. In the last, in this school year alone, not having a social worker has had a devastating impact on our students. We have a student body that are really dependent on social work support. And we have noticed in our classrooms and, um, within our, our students that they have really struggled without having that support. Our school needs a full-time social worker. And so I'm calling to, um, implore you all to help our school get the social work support that we need instead of a part-time social worker, which will just be insufficient for our particular student body and the supports that we need. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy?
Hi, uh, my name is Kathy and I'm a parent of a first grader also at Flynn Elementary at Caesar Chavez and Harrison Street. Um, my child's first grade class had several kids who really need social work help, but without going into their personal details. And that's only one classroom of 20. There's over 400 students at Flynn Elementary. And so, uh, the half-time social worker is not really enough to support these kids. And as the first caller said, this is really not optional or bonus. This is essential to the kids' learning and having a half-time social worker, we really would be glad to have anyone doing this work. But social work is not something that can be scheduled until those half-days. It's something that is really needed when it's needed. And so I want to call to support a full-time social worker at Flynn.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Kai Marquez. I'm the vice president of the senior class at George Washington High School. In the past, personal graduations that took place at Washington gave alumni one last look at the school that shaped who the world would receive them as. Having the graduation on campus gave them a chance to say goodbye to the teachers who had the biggest hand in their development, to say thank you. We want that chance for ourselves. Spending over a year in distance learning, we want our last memory to be at the school to feel like we were a part of our school's history and culture. On that note, having the graduation on the school site gives younger students a chance to see what they are aspiring to, as well as to hear the send-off speeches of their peers. Out of nearly 300 seniors surveyed, 100% of them agreed that having the graduation on campus would be greater at Kesar. Many of them agreeing with what I'm commenting now and what my peers will say. Another reason brought by the student body is that the great view that we have, uh, our school is amazing of the Golden Gate Bridge. Along with the student body support, the majority of the teachers at Washington want, uh, the graduation at our school so then they can say goodbye to the students. We are grateful for our beautiful campus, which is why we are offering a chance to work with any other SFUSD high school to use our stadium for their graduation. We appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Autumn?
Hello, my name is Autumn and I am the vice president of the PTA at Flynn Elementary. This is the second time this school year that I have visited you all to beg for a full-time social worker for Flynn. I'm very curious to know why social workers were not reassigned like teachers were. In the last three years, I've sat in on many of these calls where you and your colleagues have stated that focal students are your focus. 60% of Flynn students meet your definition of focal students, but the district is not prioritizing the children at Flynn. In addition to the specific needs that my own child has, focal children are going without the services that they need every day at our school. Asking our community to share a brand-new-to-the-district social worker with another school that has a fraction of Flynn's needs is frankly inequitable. Based on the conversations I'm having with other families, there is a long list of students waiting and essential interventions that need to happen immediately. We need the social worker to get started immediately, but without a full-time person, Flynn students will continue to struggle. Please prioritize our focal students. I know this is your priority and I want to see you take action. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will call the next group. Selena, Chris, Chava, David, Todd and Supriya. Again, that's Selena, Chris, Chava, David, Todd and Supriya. Selena?
Hi, I'm here. Um, so thank you again. Um, I wanted to voice up, um, you know, for, um, the Chinese, uh, Chinese-American community. I believe since the beginning of, uh, this COVID, um, our community has been very misunderstood and mislabeled and anyhow, and, um, there has been, you know, uh, verbal attacks and physical attacks against us and our students. Um, I believe, um, you know, for SFUSD, um, there, there needs to be, you know, a voice in your, um, in your, on your table coming from that, um, uh, Chinese, Chinese-American, Asian-American communities. Uh, I wish, you know, there should be a Chinese parent advisory council because I, I was speaking to, um, you know, other families and they were surprised that there is no CPAC, there's no representation, nothing recognized by, um, SFUSD. And they wish, their community wished to bring, you know, their perspective, their goals, um, their, you know, their, their, their need, um, from their community, um, to share with SFUSD to bring this on to the table. So this way you can hear everyone's perspective and work together for a better, you know, school district for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yes. Hi, my name is Christopher Su, a senior ASB member at George Washington High School, and I would like to discuss this year's senior graduation venue. At Wash, students have gained support from an amazing staff, the resources of a spacious campus accompanied by a majestic view of the Golden Gate Bridge. Graduating at Wash then is a fine way to reflect this and to pay homage to the community that graduating students have been a part of for four years of their life. At graduation, students should be able to, among a community of graduates and staff, show off the ways in which the school has supported them. Parents will become more immersed in the school community on campus rather than at Kesar. This in turn will increase enrollment in SFUSD schools and further support the staff. Moreover, it is utterly depressing that SFUSD is suppressing graduates by allowing a mere two hours to celebrate their diligence. If SFUSD is really student-centered, why doesn't it listen to the majority of people who want to graduate out? If SFUSD is united, why separate students from their schools and from their friends who want to attend graduation? If SFUSD is fearless, why turn to changing graduation venues rather than focusing on bigger issues like textbooks and salaries? SFUSD tries hard to reform its community in the name of equity, but eliminating the ability for students to graduate at Wash and to show off the community is taking it a step too far. Thank you.
Thank you. Chava?
Hi, my name is Chava. I'm a Flint parent at Flynn Elementary. And I just wanted to add my voice, um, to the others and request a full-time social worker at Flynn. It's, um, as noted by others, um, a high-risk, high-need school. And I know that every child, um, needs all the stabilization that they can get. And I believe that having a full-time social worker would really serve our school community. And I'm hoping that you all can, um, work to expand the existing hours that we'll be receiving. Thanks so much.
Thank you. David?
Hi, uh, my name is David Murphy. Uh, I have two kids at Flynn. Um, I think, uh, the Flynn community members have spoken already, have made our case. Uh, so I just want to add our voice, um, asking for a full-time social worker. Um, uh, especially since this school has got, uh, uh, such need for, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Todd and Supriya?
Hi, this is Supriya. Thanks for taking my call. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. First, with respect to outdoor learning, I wanted to note that many people, both parents and folks who work at schools, have asked me about the status of the outdoor learning bond funding applications. And since I've been working on this issue for a long time, you know, I often get questions about it. And I haven't been able to tell anyone anything new for quite a while now. It's like people's applications have gone into a black hole. And schools keep wondering when they're going to be notified about what will be done. Just generically saying that in January, there might be a list of things that they can get is not very much information and isn't responsive to their actual applications. Second, I wanted to make a brief comment on vacancies. There was a comment, I believe by Superintendent Wayne, but maybe by somebody else about difficulties filling vacancies. And I wanted to note that the experience of a number of people I know who applied to SFUSD has been pretty negative in that they were often not even contacted back when they had applied or not contacted for many, many months. Such that by the time they were contacted, it, you know, they just weren't even willing to consider those vacancies anymore. These are qualified people. These are not unqualified people. So there seems to be some sort of difficulty in the HR department in terms of even getting back to people in any sort of reasonable fashion. That might help a lot in terms of filling vacancies. And finally, I note that Flynn's been raising their lack of a social worker. Jefferson Elementary, which has 500 students.
Thank you. Thank you. That is your time, Supriya. Thank you. Okay, I'll call the next group. Tom, Rachel, Anu, Megan and Jordan. Again, that's Tom, Rachel, Anu, Megan and Jordan. Tom?
Hi, I'm a parent and a teacher in the district, special education teacher. I just want to echo what the person said earlier about paraprofessionals, the backbone of the district. They do so much amazing work and it's kind of disgusting. We keep saying this and we don't pay them what they're owed. So I want to say that. But the other thing is too, we talk a lot about as commissioners, what students need, being student-centered. But are you actually going to schools and seeing that? I mean, I know that the superintendent went did some of the listening sessions. There was like photo ops with the mayor and the Halloween costumes, which is all cute. But are you actually going in and talking to school staff, not just teachers? And what's working, what's not? You hear from Flynn, hear a lot of people. Are you going to Flynn and talking or are you just going to certain schools? Because it looks to me you're only going to certain schools. So I keep saying, go to the schools if you really care and stop talking, saying this is what students need. If you're not going and actually talking to students and doing that kind of stuff. Or is it just for photo ops and just to get reelected? Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel?
Thank you. I'd like to join other parents at Flynn. We are parents of a second grader and two TK children at Flynn. We chose Flynn because we felt that they had an incredible dedication to the well-being of all of the students. We have an amazing administration, incredible teachers. Really want to thank the teacher that spoke earlier. Those teachers cannot do their job when they're dealing with the kind of trauma and, and that needs that they are right now. So I want to echo the other parents and the other teacher in asking the school board to reverse the central office's decision and restore our social worker position to a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anu?
Hi, my name is Anu Oza. I'm the teacher librarian at Flynn Elementary and just want to echo what people have been sharing. I teach all 425 of our students and see them once a week. We are badly in need of a full-time social worker. From proactive, social emotional learning support for all of our students to the, you know, more intense needs that some of our students have, that many of our students have at the tier-two and tier-three level. And requiring the one-on-one counseling and group support that so many of our students need. It is absolutely devastating to see the impact of not having a social worker at our school. In addition to having several vacancies in other, outside of classroom staff support roles this year. We'd require a full-time social worker at Flynn this year and I hope the board can reconsider and staff that accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Good evening. My name is Megan. I'm a parent of two and a new parent at Flynn Elementary. I want to add my voice in support of the very serious need for social work at this excellent and resilient school. Please reconsider the central office's decision. We look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. Jordan?
Hello, my name is Jordan. My pronouns are she, her, they, them. First, I'm glad to hear about gender-neutral toilets, although you should really get on it. Second, Flynn Elementary, they need to have their paraeducators and they need to be fully staffed. Third, graduation, kids should have the best graduation possible. Fourth, even though Anshu just lost reelection, she should still resign. And I'm glad the elite official will be joining the board in her instead. Anshu has nothing, been nothing more than a racist, ableist motherfucker.
This is not the first time he has done this.
Okay, I will call the next group. Megan and TJ Tiffany Vashti. Again, that's Megan and TJ Tiffany Vashti. Megan?
Hello, my name's Megan Potente. I'm a former SFUSD teacher and a parent of an SFUSD graduate. I'm commenting today on the grade-three literacy goal and interim goals. I'm thrilled that SFUSD has approved the third-grade literacy goal. I'm concerned however, that it appears the goals will be measured using the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. This is a controversial assessment, proven as effective as, I quote, flipping a coin in identifying students who are struggling to learn to read. The assessment is discussed in episode five of the Soul to Story podcast. I will send you the link as well as the research study that demonstrates how this assessment fails at its goal of providing accurate information to teachers to guide them in supporting our youngest learners' literacy acquisition. There are free or low-cost, evidence-based assessments readily available in English and Spanish that take a fraction of the time FNP takes and provide helpful diagnostic information to teachers. Let's move forward with this grade-three literacy goal. But progress towards the interim goals must be measured using valid and reliable assessment data. A new assessment system is where we need to start the work to meet this third-grade literacy goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Anne Penny. I'm a mom of a kindergarten student at Leonard Flynn Elementary. And I want to add my voice to the others who have spoken on behalf of having a full-time school social worker at our school. That, which would enable us to address needs proactively instead of reactively, to coordinate between Flynn's families and social services and to train staff on how to support the social and emotional needs of our school community. On a personal note, I am the daughter of a retired school social worker. I understand firsthand what is, what is involved in the job and the, the extent to which a school social worker can help a community. The need is great at Flynn and we are suffering as a result of not having a full-time person. And I urge you to reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ?
Hi, yes, thank you for having me. I am a parent of a third grader in the SDC class at Grotton Elementary. And I am echoing what Isa mentioned earlier. The lack of para-support at Grotton is very heartbreaking. I've actually personally sent three separate people who have taken jobs as para's at Grotton and have all left due to low pay and low support. At this point, it feels like it's glorified babysitting and our students definitely deserve an education as well. I've also suggested in the past that the school district be open to allowing outside ABA support if they cannot, if they cannot hire para's. And I've been turned down. So, you know, I definitely think the pay is the problem, but I would also like to see the school district to get a little bit creative in terms of how they can fill these vacancies in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Hi, I'm Tiffany. I'm a student at George Washington High School. And I want to discuss the graduation plan. Last year as a junior, I got the opportunity to attend a senior graduation at Kesar. And I was, I would like to tell you my experience there and why we're advocating for this. When I arrived to the graduation, I was able to grab a seat close to the monitor that displayed the whole event up close. But both the sound system and the quality of the blown-up screen was poor as it was really difficult to hear and see clear shots of students' speakers and students in general when they went up to receive their diploma. Five minutes after they received their diploma, an announcement was abruptly made telling everyone to leave their premises because another school was coming to graduate and they needed time to set up for that. It was a memorable moment cut short for all the newly graduated as they were rushed to leave and had to take photos outside in the parking lot with their families and friends. When I went back to school for the, the remaining classes, I saw that some of the graduates from, that I saw at Kesar were back at Wash for the one last emotional goodbye to the school, community and their teachers. If students were allowed to graduate on-site, then everyone would have been able to experience that one last at-home goodbye in comfort of their school where they could have spent, where they spent four years building their relationship to other, with their classmates, teachers and as a school overall. So please consider changing the graduation location for George Washington High School to the school instead of Kesar. Thank you.
Thank you. Vashti?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Vashti. I teach kindergarten at Harvey Milk. I just want to say thank you to the families who showed up tonight and who are listening in on the call. I am the only kindergarten teacher this year. Our K-class was taken away and we weren't really given a lot of transparency as to the reason because the class was closed before it could be filled. And so the, how the EPC works is a little bit of a mystery to us. We really would like that kindergarten class reopened for the, you know, the longevity, the sustainability of our school. We've also been told that there's a possibility of other classes closing at some point. However, if people are told that, it may be hard to enroll. So please reopen our kindergarten class. I would love to have a grade-level partner to work with and collaborate with. Our students deserve it. Our community deserves it. We are a small-knit community in Castro and we just would like to have more transparency around the process. But in the meantime, please reopen that kindergarten class. I also have a son who graduated from George Washington last year. I totally echo what the seniors and juniors are saying this year. It was awkward and clumsy to have graduation at Kesar. So good job, all you students who are voicing their concerns. And I, I back that as well. So thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, I'm calling the next group. Jay, Charles, Diana, Jay Turner and Chris. Again, that's Jay Gardner, Charles, Diana, Jay Turner and Chris. Jay Gardner, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Jay Gardner. I'm another parent from Flynn Elementary on the mission. And so I guess I'm not the first Flynn parent you've heard from tonight and I don't think I'm going to be the last. I love hearing all these voices from Flynn and I'm really proud of our community. We love our school. We love our teachers. We love our staff. I've got two kids at Flynn, a second grader that has an IEP in place and a kinder that just came in this year. And I just want to chime in and really underline the pleas to give our kids the resources they need and to please allocate a full-time social worker for our school like, like we've always had. I think we've all seen that COVID, COVID has exacerbated challenges for so many of our students, but especially at Flynn. And while I understand it can be challenging to staff positions, this support for our community is not optional. So I really hope the board can revisit this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charles?
Yes, there are many empower problems around 403Bs. Set up a clinic to address these issues and set up a single case manager for all 403B issues. Staff shortages are dragging down the remaining staff's morale and needs. Please visit the schools unannounced yourselves during the day and ask and see how the staff are feeling. You need to see the distress in the workers' faces yourselves. If you want to improve student attendance, make families feel like they belong and students will feel like they belong. Hire people like from the community, say people like the AAPPAC, you know, members, and provide time, food and a venue for teachers and staff to meet with families. Please think of social workers as another way to increase attendance and family connection. You know, how much money can be made from ADA from one social worker? Let the kids graduate from their schools if they want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Diana. I have two children in SDC classes at Grotton Elementary. And I feel that the lack of support that the district is giving us, not hiring enough para's or even helping the para's out with higher pay for them to stay, knowing that cost of living here in the city is higher. Two children of mine, first grader and a fifth grader, they need mainstreaming into general education. And without those para's at the school, I feel that my kids are not being included into normal general ed classes and just being left behind in SDC classes. I would really like more para's at the school, more support for our teachers. They are overwhelmed, they're overworked and yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Turner?
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking our input this, tonight. My son is a second grader at Flynn where he's been blessed by absolutely wonderfully dedicated staff, other great families and students. I wanted to amplify the request for a full-time social worker there. The data that I was able to review shared by our assistant principal really showed kind of disproportionately high needs at Flynn. Flynn, as suggested by the raw numbers for like economically disadvantaged, English learners, students with disabilities, students experiencing homelessness or in foster families. Just from our own child's experience, you know, we had, one of his classmates was climbing out the second-story window in tears. Feeling like he needed to go back to Guatemala. My own son's been strangled three times, three different places at school. Came home today with like a cut, like a quarter inch from his eye. And when we talked to our staff about what they need, above all, what they've shared is that so social work would be kind of the most helpful thing they can see. So I urge you all to please consider whether or not that might be possible for our school. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Okay, I'm calling the final group. It will be Chris, Sarah and Rianda. Again, that's Chris, Sarah and Rianda. Chris? Sarah?
Hi, my name is Sarah Meskin. I am a SFUSD parent. I'm also a teacher. I just want to echo sentiments that have been spoken already this evening. I'm concerned about the fact that the district is using a reading assessment system that has been shown to be flawed and not reliable. And I would really like to urge the district to adopt a more reliable assessment system that will help our district to reach the stated goals and also to improve student outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Rihanna?
So good evening, board commissioners and everybody in attendance. I had to leave and get my little one on the way home apologies. But I did want to call in tonight to stand with all the students who called from their various high schools. My, of course, attended George Washington High School. I had an alumni who already graduated in 2016 and we had an amazing time. The football field is more than large enough to safely hold all the students and families and it will allow us to the opportunity and the time to say our final goodbyes to a school that we love so much. So we ask that you please, please, please consider allowing us to have our graduation at our school site. Thank you so much.
Thank you. President Lynn, let us conclude a general public comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the public for your comments. At this time, we will also open up, we heard this evening already, but we will open it up to SF USC students. So we'll see if there's any public comment for, from SF USC students at this time.
Not in person.
Again, if you're a student and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. Seeing one hand raised, Arabella? Arabella?
Hi, yes, I am not a student, but I am calling to echo.
Sorry, Arabella, this is a time for students to, to speak. So unfortunately, we won't be able to take your comment right now. Again, if you're a student and you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Kai?
Hi, I'd just like to thank everyone who echoed our questions and what we want. Thank you all. Please think about what we said. And again, we are willing to give other schools opportunity to graduate at our school as well in the name of equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Autumn?
Yes, my child left a note for me to read. She's gone to bed. Is that permissible? Can you hear me?
I'm deferring to our president.
If it's truly from your student.
It is. I have a second grader at Leonard Flynn and she just had a quick thing she wanted to share and she wrote, please give Flynn back our feelings teacher to be at school every day. We miss her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are at this time going to take a five-minute recess. We are going to move up agenda item K for general, the student outcomes progress monitoring. So this time we were to take a five-minute recess. We're going to move our chairs and we're going to move into this, the middle of the dice. Thank you.
Again, so you may notice we're in a little different format and I'm excited that we are going to be having our first discussion about student outcomes since the board approved our vision, values, goals and guardrails. As part of that process, the board committed to governance focused on student outcomes and working towards our goals. And so that means a commitment to spending ultimately half of our time at board meetings engaged in progress monitoring towards our, our goals and our, then the metrics used for our interim goals and interim guardrails. And so this is the meeting where typically our research planning and accountability department would present overall, all the data from the past year and just offer the data to the public with some discussion about what it means. And then we move on. And so we're doing things a little differently. Chris, you see us around the table because we want to have a deeper dive into the data and a discussion about, really tonight's more discussion about progress monitoring. Secondly, we wanted to, you know, really have, we're focusing the discussion not on all the data, but on the data related to our goals, the goals that the board approved. And third, we're, think of this as almost like we're exercising a new muscle, right? This is, you know, new for all of us to be engaged in progress monitoring. So we're going to be, it's as much about learning what that process is like as it is really starting it because we just have our baseline data. We don't have additional data to, to look at, but we'll focus on the baseline data and what progress monitoring looks like. So tonight I'll share a brief overview of progress monitoring. We'll pause. We know our student board members, we only have them for a short period of time. So they can make any comments or questions if you have any on the progress monitoring process. Then we'll look at the data and Dr. Ritu Kana from Research Planning Accountability will help present the data. I'll share some interpretations and then we'll have a discussion about the data and really again, what it means in the context of our progress monitoring process. We also have online is AJ Krabell from the Council of Great City Schools here.
Yes.
Okay, so he'll be chiming in at some points to share about this process because we, as you know, you've adopted the Council of Great City Schools approach to governance. And so he'll be able to share a little bit more about this process and respond to questions or comments in the discussion. So any questions about what we're doing here and why we're around the table? Okay, so if we can get the presentation up. And also you've actually seen the first few slides because you all presented them. So I just wanted to remind you of what you wanted to hold yourselves accountable to and the public of what we're committed to doing. And so when we get there, we'll just remind the public about, you know, our approach to improving governance, how it's premised on two beliefs. School systems exist and prove student outcomes and student outcomes don't change until adult behaviors change. And when adopting the vision, values, goals and guardrails, the Board of Education committed to improving our behaviors and practices to improve student outcomes. And so one of those changes is having much more in-depth discussions about student outcomes through a progress monitoring process. So if you go to slide four, just as a reminder, what the board does is you establish the vision and values, which, you know, the long-term where we want to go as students. You establish goals for five years out. The goals are for student learning, so they must be described what students will know and be able to do. And the guardrails are the non-negotiables that must be honored while implementing the goals. And then I'm creating interim goals and interim guardrails to measure progress towards those goals and to measure how, how we're doing implementing the guardrails. And so I shared draft interim goals and guardrails at the last meeting. And then I, now that you've approved the goals, looking at the data, you heard some comments earlier tonight about needing to make sure we have the right data to look at. And then I'll be sharing more in January, the updated goals, interim goals and guardrails. If you have the next slide, just share this numerous times, our approach to this work. And one, you know, key concept to, to make sure we hold is that there are different levels of data. And we use data for different reasons. And so we have what we call satellite level data, which is high level broader data that tells you how the system's doing, but doesn't talk about, you know, individual students or schools or gives you much information about like where to take action. Then you have map level data, which is a little bit more localized and that might be like our local assessments, our surveys we give. That can start to point us in the direction of specific actions that might help address the issue. And then there's the street level data, what we hear from our students and our staff, when we're out in schools or talking to them directly. That's really what needs to be driving the improvement at the classroom level. We use the satellite data at the system level to mark progress. And then if you go to the next slide, this is one you presented as well, that the process you adopted in working with the Council of Great City Schools has, as you clarify our priorities, monitor progress, align resources, communicate results, and then keep doing that, that continuous improvement process. So we're right at the beginning of monitoring progress and just going to look at the first few, first two steps of that. And then later this year, we'll be aligning our resources around these goals when we go through the budget process. We actually have a workshop next month on that. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to spend a minute talking about this. And so the Council of Great City Schools has offered a very clear process for monitoring progress. And it has, it expects that the superintendent will be bringing monitoring progress reports to board meetings for review and discussion. And the reports need to have four components. One, they need to define the goals. So be clear what the goals are as well as the interim goals. Two, they need to actually review the data and the data needs to show the trends. You know, have the current data and then show the trends from the previous appropriate periods. And then also disaggregate the data. Now, we adopted universal goals, but we're taking a targeted approach to meeting those, knowing we have groups of students for whom we need to accelerate improvement. And so we only see that if we disaggregate the data. And then third, I need to bring forward an interpretation of the data that demonstrates an understanding of our performance relative to the goal. And so showing like how this data provides insights into the actions and strategies we're taking to improve performance. And then I need to show, bring a plan that has evidence based on our interpretation of the data of what we're doing. And then, and so tonight, we're just going to focus on defining the goals and reviewing the data because the data has just come out and you just approved the goals. And then I have the next few months to craft my interpretation and then the plan will actually come out through as we do our planning for 23, 24. I will share a little bit interpretation tonight, just to give an idea of what that looks like. But again, the focus is on just looking at the baseline data and then understanding this process. So with that, I'm going to see if AJ, if you'd like to add anything and then turn it over to our student board members if they have any comments or questions, and then we'll open to the board about the process, then we'll get to the data.
He's about to be elevated.
Okay. Big pub. You asking about? I think it would make sense after we actually. This is just a discussion. These mics are still on. We got AJ?
Yes.
AJ, you, you heard all that, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay, if any additional context you want to share?
No, I'm excited to get involved in this. The one thing that I'll double down on that you said is that this is going to take some practice. It's just a different set of muscles. I appreciate how you described that. It's just a different set of muscles and it'll take some time to build some strength with using them. You know, this board has shown itself to be quite comfortable doing a lot of homework. And so just know that in between board meetings, as board members ever want to go over these things, work together to develop questions or to just think through the data, I'll always be your ally in that work. And so don't hesitate to reach out. That certainly begins this evening as we're going through this. Whether you administratively or the board members from a governance perspective have any questions, I'm just here to be resource.
Thank you. So it's open to the board, starting with our student board members and then the rest of the board. Questions about the process, then we'll get to the data.
I just, I appreciate that we're creating a process. I think as we've all known, one of the issues we're having is a lack of transparency in our processes. So I'm glad that we are making it very transparent and open to the public. And I hope that the public also holds us accountable to actually following this process and those of my comments to do with the data.
I second everything Cal just said. I'm curious on how like each type of data, like I know this falls into like the data portion. I'm curious on how we should have the data, like the street and satellite data are planning on being used to monitor students. A little more information on that because it seems like each type of data is very detailed.
So that's a great question. So let's take something like, let's take our literacy goal, right? So the Sback data that we're looking at only comes out once a year and it comes out actually after the teachers, you know, after the students and the teachers work with have left. So then the math level data is, would be, for example, the benchmarks that we have that happen two to three times a year where we could look at and see how students are progressing and teachers can use that information as well for their planning. The street level data is actually what happens in the classroom with teachers sitting with kids and say, reading with them and are seeing how they're doing on their student assignment. So the street level data will sometimes inform the work is less public, you know, less like, you know, shared, but the map level data definitely at this level for the interim goals will be what we'll be talking a lot about. Because you know, the interim goals are what's happening in between each of the annual benchmarks. So that give a picture?
Yeah.
All right, how about for the board? Questions on process?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about, I guess, the, the data sources that we're using to kind of measure on the goals. And I guess like what limitations I guess exist in them and what kind of thought you have. I know we talked a little bit aboard about like what kind of other measures we can develop over time. You could just talk a little bit about that and how that's kind of fitting into like your planning and what the public should expect as we kind of go through this process.
Sure. So you have the, the board approved the five-year goals on, based on the Sback data. And we had discussion about the merits of using state test data. But since the expectation is they describe what students know and are able to do at the systems level, that's the, you know, data that we have available and that, you know, is used by the states and others to see, you know, how, how are we doing as a system? But in terms of like the interim goals, we're looking at using the data that, that map level data that we have internally. I think the question, the reason why I haven't just committed to, here's all the data we're going to use is because we do need to get clear on what data is going to be helpful in monitoring progress towards the goals. So again, using third grade literacy as an example, we have a current benchmark, but we are going through a process having received an audit about our literacy practices, needing to look at both our curriculum and then the assessments that go with it. And so we're developing a literacy plan that will inform how the interim goals are being, are being looked at. And Ritu, can you speak to then on the guardrails? Like, so that's where there's going to even be broader debate because when we talk about serving the whole child or like our focus on instruction, you know, what does that look like? Can you speak briefly to the, like, let's say the QTEA survey that we're doing, that how that could provide information? And then hopefully that gives a picture in response to your question of like what we're looking at.
Yeah, sure. So you know, it, it gives us different stakeholder views to the same concept. So the QTEA survey is done with administrators, teachers, has an excellent response rate of 75%. So you know, it has a good breadth of data covering different aspects of, you know, the school functioning, school culture and school climate as well as satisfaction of employees. In terms of the guardrails and you know, you mentioned implementation measures. So some of the implementation measures that we started to do last year with the L gap, that now we want to, you know, formalize the process as we go through progress monitoring is around answering three questions. A, did it happen? Two, how frequently did it happen? And did it reach all that were intended to be reached? And the third is what is the quality of the implementation? So again, you know, trying to also look at implementation measures in addition to the quantitative measures.
I guess just a follow-up on that. How then are we kind of balancing the different ways things are done at individual school sites? And kind of how that correlates to the outcome data that we're seeing and how we trace it back to, I guess, root cause and how we're kind of adjusting our solutions to match the problem?
I think, well, so that's going to be, going to need to be some of the work we do over the next few months. So one is, do we have measures that are being consistently implemented across sites that we can draw from? And then what, what are the strategies and actions that might be, you know, across the district that we want to look at to see if they're, you know, working, helping us reach our goals? And then our, you know, there are different needs in different communities. What are specific strategies that might be being used at school sites that we want to assess? And this is what's really going to come out, like I said, the root cause analysis of why we are where we are over the next several months.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, the difference between like we have an. No, I appreciate that. Yeah, the difference between like we haven't allocated enough resources to support a school versus a school doesn't have the right strategy. And like being able to parse that out as we figure out how we move forward. Thank you so much for that clarity.
Commissioner White and Warren? Thank you. So I also, I'm excited about the, I think. Student delegate, you know, Shota Kishida's statement, you know, this is, I think what folks have been asking for. Folks are looking for data, folks are looking for real numbers, the good, the bad, the ugly. Like just so that we can then figure out a plan to address and support all of our students. I think this relates to Vice President Bogus's, the first part of the question and about sort of what types of. Data we're looking at and what are. What our metrics are and you you described the the map level data and and as it relates to literacy, acknowledging that we're actually in a process of. Looking at that and understanding what, how we might be revamping and adjusting our literacy strategies. And I think what would be really helpful when I see this slide seven is this certain, there's a sequencing that has to happen, right? And so how does that from a from a visual perspective, where does that? Sort of curriculum assessment fit into this? This this blue arrow.
So I'll chime in, I'll answer then AJ, you could chime in. Because, you know, I've done this work as a as a superintendent before, but this, there are some unique components to the process. And one thing I've appreciated about this process is the goals were adopted this year with. And I think an expectation and understanding that the interim goals are for twenty three, twenty four. Because we we adopted the goals, but the resources were already set for this year. So really what's happening in steps two and three are going to be over the next four to six months. And then to be kind of California should show up in our LCAP. As what the 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 plan and the evidence that we're we're that supporting that that plan around those goals. So that's the the timeline for this. What we'll be doing over the next several months is tonight's looking at the baseline data. And then actually, the Council of Great City Schools can help us kind of practice this, looking at other districts that have done these reports. So we can get a clearer picture of like, what does that interpretation look like? And what does it look like to have evidence attached to a plan? So that's what we'll be doing. But you're not going to see the actual real plan and the progress on those plans till the twenty three, twenty four school year. And that's, I want to say, that doesn't mean we're not doing things this year. Like I know, you know, I mean, I've been in classrooms where I see kids are not meeting our standards. And so they're they're, you know, it doesn't mean we're we're not focused on improving student outcomes for this year. It just means we're not ready to, you know, to, we're not going to be able to fully implement the progress monitoring around this in the way that it's intended for this year. But by no means that 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 doesn't mean that the students of the twenty two, twenty three school year aren't going to get support in literacy and math and in these other areas.
They're going to be assessed and then we're talking about the FMP, how different from another.
Yeah.
The test that we give, the assessment we give, which is not some of it that's given throughout the year. Is that going to be used for our intervals or not?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, right now, that's, that's what we have as our baseline assessment. And and then I, you know, I I'm kind of looking at AJ. AJ, for the interim goals, right, I guess, yeah, because we already reviewed this. We're using a baseline from what we currently currently have, even for interim goals, even though those are different assessments, right?
So it depends. Well, so board members, for your edification, the primary thing. That the superintendent has to deliver on with the interim metrics, both the interim goals and the interim guardrails is. How do these align to the goals themselves? And so if the data that you currently have is in fact predictive of the goals, then yes, it's eligible to be used. But if the superintendent and his team look at your existing interim assessment data. And it's actually not predictive, it doesn't give meaningfully aligned insights into how the school system is likely to perform. On your, on your goals, some of this data that you selected for your goals. Then that isn't useful as interim, because it doesn't actually tell you anything. So looking at it throughout the year isn't helping be predictive of what's likely to happen by the end of the year. So that's not meaningful data that you would make system level strategic pivots based off of. So that's the challenge that your administration has before them is now that they have your goals in their hands. They need to look at the data that's available and figure out, is the interim data that is currently available actually predictive of the goals? Can we use this to determine if the goals are likely to be accomplished or not? If that's the case, then it's eligible to be used. But if they do that analysis and it's not. Reto and for the other data nerds in the audience, normally what I recommend is if you do a correlational analysis and it's something. You know, shy of point five, then I would say, don't use it. Obviously, the higher the better, but I think point five, point six, you know. Is workable. Yeah, but board members, if they do that type of analysis and it's not sufficiently predictive, the the degree of correlation is not strong. Then they will need to come back to you and say, actually, the data we currently have doesn't work to give us insights into your goals. We're going to have to identify a different set of data for our interims. So I don't, I'm not suggesting that will be the case. I'm just clarifying, the purpose of the interim goals is to give you a predictive understanding of how are you likely to perform on the goals? And if your existing data sets provide that, then they'll be eligible to be used. If the superintendent finds that they don't, the superintendent will have to come back to you and suggest a different set of interim assessments.
Mark. So the FMP, I think, is relatively useful. It's not necessarily predictive of what happened on the summer test, the state test, the S back. And one of the reasons is because, for example, if you're a fifth grade teacher or student and you're reading at a first grade level. And you make a whole year's growth or even two years growth in that year and you take the fifth grade aspect, you will bomb, you will not. Show any because it's a test that's at the fifth grade level, but you're now reading at a third grade. So you've made growth and the and the FMP and other management tools can show that, but the summative assessment won't show that growth.
Well, your other challenge is not all is even what I would describe as interim data, much of it is formative assessment data, which. Formative assessment data I would describe as not being appropriate for interim to be used as interim goals.
FMP is not. It is formative. It's well, it's beyond formative. It's not summative, but it's basically saying where the kid is reading at.
I'm just going to chime in. So I don't figure, like Commissioner Sanchez was saying is whether is FMP formative or summative? So I'm gonna, well, I'll say, and then and maybe and then Ritu can add on. Yeah, so there, we're talking about, we're talking about really three types of assessments, right? So a summative says at the end of something, at the end of learning, like here's what sums up how you did. And that's like what the S back will do for the year and it's usually attached to a standard. A formative is what shows progress along the way and can inform what teachers should do with the student to improve. An interim or a benchmark is kind of before the summative, but tells you how you're making progress towards that end goal. And then let me see if I, we were, we were having this discussion. Formatives, our benchmarks could be formative. Yeah. You know, but and and sometimes formatives could be benchmarks, but there there's some that, you know, can't serve as both. So you're right. F and P may not end up being the right benchmark for what we're doing, but it has formative. That's why I'm saying it's a formative because it it has formative value. It is also a benchmark in the sense that it says grade level. Yeah, and you're doing it three times a year, but it may not correlate as well with where we're going. But that doesn't mean it it still could provide information the teacher needs to improve literacy.
Absolutely.
And that's what we're going to need to work through because. Yeah, like, and and that's what the audit showed around the TMPI audit showed in terms of our assessment. Like we have assessments, but the consistency of how they're used and the information we're getting from them. Well, I guess it's it's inconsistent how they're used and the information we're getting. You want to add on though?
Yeah, but I feel like there's two different things we're talking about here that are related but distinct. One is the formative versus summative, which I think relates to the the interim goals versus. What happens before that, right? So even if we have an interim goal, there's, that's a, that's a year end interim goal, right? I mean, it's a, am I right about that? So the interim goal would be for twenty, for example, for twenty three, twenty four school year.
So then we're. No, that, no, that's not.
That's not right?
No, so the purpose of your interim goals is to be able to give you insights throughout the school year. Regarding how student performance is growing or not. And so in order for it to be eligible to be an interim goal, it has to be data that is updatable multiple times throughout the school year. This, this is why summative assessments are not eligible to be interim goals. But it's also gives some insight into why formative assessments are not eligible. Really, it's just interim assessments that would be eligible to be used for.
AJ, let me ask a clarifying question, I think, to Commissioner Alexander's point. So I presented an interim goal of, you know, black students achieving an eighty percent on the end of year benchmark. But kindergarten, kindergarten, but really what you're saying is that is a benchmark that's given three times a year, right? So really our progress, so how do you phrase the goal then, the the interim goal? Because am I saying in first administration, it's at this level and second administration is at that level? And then third administration is that level and we're updating the interim goals every, you know, three times a year? I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's, that's, that's where, because I know I presented something that was more summative.
And I guess, I don't know if AJ wants to answer that, then I have a follow up.
The short answer is, the short answer is yes, you're, you will monitor goals. The the intention is to monitor goals four times per year. One of those four times will almost certainly be based on the summative data of the goal itself. The other three times will be based on the interim goals that is the interim data. And so that's how you wind up monitoring each goal four times. You're looking at predictive data, your interim goals, three of those times. And you're looking at the actual summative data, the goal itself, one of those times.
So I think what I was going to say earlier, that's really helpful. What I was going to say earlier is I think there's that piece of information that's that's really important for our process here. And then there's this issue around satellite data, map data and street data, which is actually a little distinct, right? Because it's like, we don't, that, even if we give an interim assessment three times a year. That's, that's sort of, that's standardized, right? And AJ's saying it needs to be standardized to the point where it can be. Aligned statistically predictive of the S back. That's a standardized assessment that is satellite data. That's not map data. If it's, if it's, because map data has to be more connected to the curriculum to some extent, right? And street data has to be even more connected to what happens on a daily basis. Our interim assessments are standardized district wide, like a dipstick kind of a saying like this is. Whatever's happening in the classroom, this is what is the outcome, right? And we have some predictive. Thing there, right? But there's also, I think, a layer of this of that's really important in terms of. What's happening on a, like, what are, what are teachers doing on a weekly, monthly basis to understand? So I mean, and I don't, I'm not an expert in early literacy, but it might be like you said, reading with kids. They're standardized somewhat semi-standardized way where you can read with kids and. Help me out. Where you'd do like a record of listening to a kid read and you make notes. A running record, right? Thank you. So that to me would be almost a form of map data where it's like, okay, I'm doing running records with my kids. This kid is improving on running record. You know, we would hope then that they would do better on interim assessment, but but they may not because maybe. You know, maybe there's other factors, maybe there's, so I guess I just think there's, there's layers to this that, and I just don't want to lose. This, I think there has to be alignment, but then it's, we don't want, in in my opinion. We shouldn't assume that just because something happens on an interim basis that it's not satellite level data. I think that's still like kind of this system level data and there need to be things that are really robust and connected to the curriculum that might be different. In different schools, if they're taking slightly different strategies, again, if we have hypotheses, it's going to lead to this. To the outcomes on the thing. I don't know if that makes sense, but I just wanted to make that distinction.
And what you're describing is pretty normal across school systems all across the country. In that there is a, and one thing that I would differ with you on, I do see interim assessment as being map level data. Most of the time, though there are some interim assessments that I would join you and describe them as more satellite level data. But what the very common practice that I see across the country is that there is. The assessment that is being used to help make system level decisions, which I think of is more the value of interim and summative assessment. And then there's assessment that's used to help make instructional level decisions, which I think of as more as diagnostic. And formative assessments. And so those are the four types of assessments I normally think of when I'm thinking of assessment, diagnostic. Yeah, formative interim and summative. And I think of the purpose of diagnostic assessment and formative assessment is really helping to. Teachers refine their practice in the classroom, helping buildings refine, you know, their instructional, you know, plan across the, you know, grade levels or across the subject area. Whereas I think of interim and summative assessment is really helping make decisions that are we. May providing an equitable distribution of resources across the school system. I don't think diagnostic and formative data can help you understand that as well as interim and summative data can.
And that, and I guess my point would be for the non-educators here, that the farther you get from the clap, from the teaching, the the data that's useful for a teacher. The more, the system data in the in the data that's useful for a teacher are different sets of data and they're, it's like a spectrum. But there are different purposes and so we need to have both. And they're not always perfectly aligned because the, these ones are more standardized up here. And but those ones are much, much less useful for teacher. And there've been systems in the past under No Child Left Behind where it was like, all we talked about was this stuff. And the idea was teachers were supposed to use that to improve learning and it didn't work, right? So it's like, it's like you gotta do both.
Yeah, again, this is why I would suggest.
She's been trying to jump in here, you know, just give her a moment.
Okay, so when we're reviewing the data and trying to align them with our roles. It seems to me that if we say our literacy rate is so low, right now fifty two percent. We have to ask why and come up with the different hypothesis of why. Perhaps, I'm just wondering, perhaps it's absenteeism, if the kid doesn't show up, can't teach him. Perhaps it's the curriculum, maybe the curriculum is not very effective. Perhaps it's in the future, whatever, the X number of. Causes, potential causes to why we're getting such bad results. And then if we can come up with those, then we can say, let's improve absenteeism. If we think that is one of the reasons for cause. And then the other one could be, let's find a better curriculum. That's also one of the causes that's higher more experienced teachers. Then you set the interim goals to improving absenteeism, which is completely different from whether it's formative or or a summative measurement of. Literacy, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, except, except for I think what AJ would say is that there's two different things. Absenteeism might might be contributing to this. It's not going to be then an interim goal. We might need to have a strategy and that's more around our guardrail. Which is why I have one of the measures being chronic absenteeism to make sure we're serving the whole child. Because the, the, you know, absenteeism doesn't measure student learning, but it's maybe a necessary, students being in schools is a necessary condition for them to learn. But we need the interim assessment, we need the interim goals to be around what students know and are able to do. Connected to what our, our, our. The board's overall goal is.
But then if you don't, let's say absenteeism is a cause for, and I would think it really is. And if we don't measure that and we improve that, then it's not going to help solve the.
We're going to monitor it through the guardrail.
That's what I'm saying, we monitor it through the guardrails. Yeah, so for the guardrail, like we have a guardrail called, you know, serving the whole child. The superintendent will not allow students, social, emotional, some various needs. And so I then have to come up with measures of how do we make sure I'm not, you know, you know, allowing those to interrupt? So one of the measures I said was, well, if a student's not coming to school, their needs aren't being met. And so we're going to look at progress in reducing chronic absenteeism.
So you're gonna.
Yeah, but not under a goal, under a guardrail.
It's in the, it's in the plan.
Yeah, the goal is just related that. So I'm going to suggest this. See, this is why. See, this is why, it's funny, because even when planning this presentation, right? I have one slide here, you think, are we really gonna talk for a whole hour about the process? I mean, we're, you know, we just talked for a half hour about the process, and this is why, like, so what we're already talking about, you may recall, um, you know, that when we have two meetings a month, one of them, we want to be more this forum. So we're proposing at the January tenth work, workshop meeting, we come around a table and then really look at the whole process. So if we're, uh, um, you know, so we can hear if any other commissioners have questions about process, but we're gonna get back to this. So you've raised some important questions that we'll need to answer uh and, and work through around the uh different levels of data we're using, why and what our interim uh assessments are going to, uh, you know, going to be. And then how's that gonna uh relate to decisions we're making as a system? And how does it relate to the work the teachers are doing in the, in the classroom, uh, and principals are doing when planning?
Can I just say that even though the model that HA and, and is, is using this kind of interim measure, can you just think about what I said about those, whether, cause we're talking about whether it's predictive of outcomes, right? Absenteeism, I think should be predictive of outcomes.
AJ, can you respond to that? And I'm gonna add on one layer.
Yeah.
Just because, so you heard me mention, I think you're familiar with AJ, our LCAP, that's our Local Control Accountability Plan. And like we just heard our, um, you know, uh, African-American Parent Councils uh shared tonight, and they have had some recommendations about things we, we do. Uh so to, so maybe respond to Anne's point, and I'm adding on to that, there are issues we're gonna need to address that are outside, you know, that may, you know, that maybe aren't captured in the goals or guardrails. It, um, is, it's not like we don't ever do those, is it? It's, but where, where does that get talked about and worked on in, in the system?
It doesn't, it doesn't in the board meeting.
So it doesn't in the board meeting, but that's what means we're not ignoring it.
That is correct, it, it's, it's certainly happening, it's certainly your job. So for example, the board doesn't have a goal around social studies and it doesn't have a guardrail around serving lunch. But I suspect students are still going to le, learning social studies and students are still going to be fed lunch. Um and so there's a lot of things that are really important and valuable things that simply aren't what the boards identified as priorities. And so no, the intention is that those things, you know, won't be uh the topics of discussion, you know, at the board table. Um, the, the challenge with having priorities is you actually do have to prioritize them. And the reason so many boards fail to govern effectively is because they lack the discipline necessary to focus on a narrow set of things that the board is predefined as mattering the most. That is gonna be the challenge is there will always be other things that are legitimately meaningful and important that the board can focus its time on, to the extent that it chooses to do so rather than exercising discipline. It's willfully in those moments saying that the priorities actually aren't the priority. This, this is a challenging phenomenon, uh, most boards wrestle with this, many boards fail. Um, and their adherence to their own priorities, just because it is a really uncomfortable um and um just a non-obvious thing to do. Uh but that, that is absolutely the case, is that there will be plenty of topics that come up that simply um will be important and incredibly interesting things, um but that aren't going to be the board's focus. And so the intention is that the board will say, he, the board has said, here are the priorities. And if you want to have the best chance at having those priorities uh come to life, then you're gonna have to focus in on them even when it's uncomfortable to do so. Um to, you know, and specific question, uh, one of the other challenges the board's gonna have to face is um, your allegiance has to be to the priorities that the board has collectively set, not to your specific strategies and ideas about how best to achieve those goals. Um, your focus has to be on, show us evidence of whether or not our students are making progress in the ways that our community uh has identified as a priority and that we've codified that community priority in the goals. Show us evidence of whether or not our students are making progress in areas and where they are. Give us some insights into um why that's the case and how we're, you know, replicating and growing in success, whether or not. Give us some root cause analysis about why it's not happening and what's some of the things you're planning to do to pivot on that. But it's not the function of the board in this conversation, in the monitoring conversation, to show up and say, here are the things that you need to be doing to cause these goals to be accomplished. Um, that's, that's not the function of monitoring. Uh, in monitoring, what you really wanna know is what is the chief executive know? What is it, what is this, uh, what does the superintendent understand about performance? And what is the superintendent uh view of what it's going to take to meet the needs of students? Um, it's not the occasion by which board members each bring out um our favorite and ideal strategy for how we get there. What you really wanna know is what's the superintendent's view of how we get there, informed by the conversations that he's been having with staff and, um, and with families and students?
AJ, uh, th- thank you for sharing that. I'm gonna add, so that's, that's a lot for us to consider. And like I said, this is kinda, you know, exercising a new way of being that we're, we're, um, I don't know if you can see all the looks here, that, but some are gonna question, but there's a lot of nods that we're gonna need to, need to figure this out. And I think that's why seeing the whole process, like in our next workshop, will be really helpful to understand, um, you know, what those conversations would, uh, would look like. So if it's okay, I do wanna get to the data, some, just, uh, I think we allocated an hour for this conver, conversation, and we can get to some of the, the data. Okay. So, um.
I was coming. If AJ, you're working with other school districts, do we really have to reinvent the wheel? And you just like tell us what other people have come up with, for reference at least.
Yeah, well, that's what we're gonna look at, at, at sample monitoring report at the next meeting. Yeah, but some of it's different, they have different goals and different assessments, but the, the process, he'll, he'll show us more.
The process of you won't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, however, the San Francisco context, that's going to be unique to you all and um, and it'll be your data, your faculty, your students, um, the community's voice, the community's circumstances that have to come alive. Uh, that you can't copy and paste. The process, though, absolutely, um, you know, the intention of this is to learn as much from other school systems from the process, but the actual implementation of it, that will be very specialized, it has to be specialized to you all, it's the only way it works.
Okay, so, um, we are going to move on to now the first two stages of this process, which uh, this one we felt comfortable trying to dive into with their own data because we have it. Uh, so one is just put up here, if you go to the next slide, yes, defining the goals. Uh, so you all approved these on October twenty-fifth, so you're familiar with the goals. These are five-year goals uh that were just adopted. So if you go to the next slide, um, we're gonna review the data and I'll turn it over to Dr. Kana to um share the data around the three goals that were listed there.
Um, thank you Superintendent Wayne, and good evening, board commissioners and members of the public. Um, before I begin to review uh the data related to the approved goals, I would like to call your attention to an additional slide deck corresponding to this, this board agenda item, which provides the district data summary for twenty-one, twenty-two, um, all the outcome metrics. So some of the domains that have been discussed today. So in that deck, you will see the trends and patterns uh for enrollment, attendance, well-being and academics. And for each of these domains, we'll have a slide that will show you overall performance as well as subgroup performance. Um, if you click on the title of that measure, it'll also give you links to all the details, uh, which is number of students as well as proficiency rates for each and every group. So that's in the slide deck. Other than that, there are two other highlights I do wanna mention from that deck. Uh, one is that the state has released their data and we were able to compare ourselves to the state's data. And in the comparison, I do wanna note that both in ELA and math proficiency rate, we are higher than the state. And our decline was slightly less than the state. Um, so you know, uh, decline meaning in terms of comparing it to the pre-pandemic uh S pack results. So those are two things I do wanna highlight in terms of the comparison. Uh, the second thing I wanna highlight is that we did look a lot at what the federal, as well as the State Department of Education has recommended us in terms of viewing these results. And what they have said is that please look at these results as this is a, a new baseline, a new baseline for doing both things, academic recovery, as well as paying attention to social emotional needs. So both things, and do this especially for students who have experienced the most disruptions in education and have faced the most challenges. So you know, paying attention for those students that have had the most disruptions and the fewest opportunities to succeed. Um, they also say that this road to recovery is long and it should be the, the support or the funding for it should be sustained over some years. Okay, with that, I'm gonna go to the data just for the approved goals. Thank you. Okay, so on this slide, you will see a five-year trend. Four of the years were pre-pandemic, and then the, the last uh bar is the slide for this current academic year, uh, last school year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So what you will see is that overall at third grade, the ELA proficiency rate is fifty-two percent, exactly the same as it was in twenty eighteen, nineteen. And you can see that this maintaining of uh the proficiency rate is quite true for most uh academic, for most student groups. What does stand out is that the academic gap persists. And uh you can see that the three lowest performing racial groups are African-American at eighteen percent, Pacific Islanders twenty-four percent, and Latinx students at twenty-eight percent. Again, this data will serve as a baseline, and as we think about our strategies, we should include a focus on these populations.
Yes, just a question for you before, you talked a little bit about the comparison with the state data. I was just wondering for the racial groups, uh, how are we comparing, especially for our lower groups like African-American students? How is that compared to African-American students at the state? No, we're above the state average as a district as a whole, but for our lower sort groups, how are we comparing?
Um, SFUSD patterns do mirror state and national trends, except that I will say that our African-American student performance is the lowest as compared to the large California districts. So I wanna say that once more, we are the lowest. In ELA, I would say there are two other districts maybe lower, but in math, we are the lowest as compared to other California districts.
Thank you so much.
No problem. Next slide. Okay, um, pivoting to goal number two, which is eighth grade math. Again, we are only looking at eighth grade math here. And what you'll see is that the performance is at forty-three percent. You'll see a decrease of seven percent as compared to pre-pandemic S pack testing. So uh there was a sharp proficiency rate decrease as is seen, not just overall, but also across the student groups. And this again was the trend that I had, I just mentioned. I want us all to note that there are two groups, African-American students and English learners, where there's less than one out of ten students of being proficient, so less than one out of ten. Um, I also wanna say that when we looked at just the English learner group and tried to break, uh disaggregate the data for the Spanish English learners was the Chinese English learners, we saw that the Spanish English learners, the proficiency rate was one point four percent in eighth grade math. So again, you know, we should pay attention to some of um that data and those groups.
Ooh, does that mean one point four for the Spanish English learner?
Yes, and Chinese was twenty point twenty, twenty point six, yes.
Could, could you also maybe provide a little clarity around the students with disabilities numbers and kind of how that breaks out for different racial groups?
Definitely, so students with disabilities, this was the one grade level, that were actually third grade, where we did see an increase. We didn't see that here, but this is data where what is happening is that um, as, as we are coming out of the pandemic, returning to in-person instruction, you know, we do see, um, we do see some data um entries in terms of reclassification, in terms of change. And so, you know, we are looking at this data a little bit more closely, also in terms of matched students. So we are still studying it.
Question.
Yes.
Or to what Vice President Bole just asked earlier, this is the uh disaggregation that we have. Is there any disaggregation by schools?
Yes.
Because maybe through that we can find out which schools are, uh, African-American kids, that these schools are doing really bad, that African-American kids, that these schools are doing great.
Yes.
That when you lump it all into African-American students, here, it doesn't really tell you the reason. This is why I say the reason why we see these, right?
Yes.
But we do have that.
Yes, we do have that, and schools did receive that data, and I've been planning with it since July.
Do we get to see that?
Yeah.
It's in the report that when, when uh Dr. Kana said you could click.
You can click.
And go deeper levels, it's in there. Right now, we're just providing the, the overview.
And now it's also available on the state's website.
And since we've kind of been jumping in, I know it's gonna get a little late, uh, Cap, do you wanna share any comments about the data? Uh, we've seen, yeah, and, um, and then, cause it's become more fluid, which is fine, but I know you, you have homework and you have a school to go to.
Yeah, I've been waiting to talk about the goals actually, um, since the beginning. So I think my biggest thing is, and I also will acknowledge that this is sort of an oversight from the last meeting in which I didn't compare the goals to the specific data sets. But I do think it's problematic that, um, we're doing the goals based off of an average of all students, because as we see like there are already Asian students, students which were more racist, white students, specific ethnic groups already performing above the average goal that we're setting. Um, and I really want to ensure that in our goals, we're also like, if we're disaggregating the data, that we're also disaggregating our goals um for five years, because I don't want us to, obviously, any student improving in literacy or math proficiency is good, but I don't wanna only increase white and Asian proficiency and continue to have black, Pacific Islander, Latinx, et cetera, proficiency below, but say that we met a goal because of the fact that as overall the average increased. So I think like, even just the issue of like, um, instead of doing the percentage of all third grade students reading, just the all, like all student, our third grade students reading at a specific rate um would help solve that, because again, just for like equity sake, I feel like even if we're able to meet the goal by having the average be seventy, we're not truly meeting our goal of equitable education if we're having specific ethnic groups continuously outperforming others by over fifty percentage points.
Um, great insights, I'll share two thoughts on that, and then I think maybe other board members wanted to chime in. One, you know, the, this was a, a big debate among the board and felt like when, I, I feel like I'll speak for the board, then you can clarify, but just when, uh, when they went out and had the community conversations, it was important to speak to the notion of wanting to, you know, having universal goals, that, cause we want all our students to be uh improving and excelling. But there was a recognition and a big debate about, you know, the fact that we do need to make sure that groups that have historically been underserved are improving. And so, one, the feedback from the community was the goals weren't ambitious enough. And by increasing the uh hi, the, the universal goal in the way that they did by, you know, we're going to have to, you know, accelerate the achievement in some of those subgroups to be able to meet that goal. Secondly, this is why the interim goals are more targeted towards um different subgroups to recognize where we need to make, uh, you know, make those improvements. But it's not gonna, it doesn't recognize that, that answer, I think, shares some of the rationale and addresses some of your concerns. But there's, uh, this is gonna be intention that we're gonna uh, um, need to work through, but I feel like, so then I'll, I'll turn it over to the board if they wanna add on, there is a commitment, a, a clear commitment in this district, by this governance team, to make sure where we, when we set the, when we work towards a universal goals, that we're taking that targeted approach, though. Do you wanna add something?
That is, was exactly my concern when we were assessing this.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so you, you know, so I guess in AJ's, this is like the proof will be in the, the progress monitoring reports and how we're, we're working towards uh, um, demonstrating how we're working towards that. demonstrating how we're working towards that.
Yeah, that particular concern, you know, as the superintendent described, came up multiple times throughout the months that the board was contemplating what the goals would be. The concern that you surface is spot on. That is the trade-off that the board accepted when it selected the goals it selected. The the goals themselves would be looking overall at all student performance. The benefit is you have you are then obligated to develop systems that are targeted at the entire school system and trying to raise performance across the board. The cost that you pay for doing that is that you do have the chance of masking some of the data in exactly the scenario that you described. The superintendent's response has been that his team is going to lean in in the interim goals. They're trying to make sure that they're looking at particular groups, but I want to add a word of caution around any magical thinking that might be taking place. Effective monitoring reports tend to be no more than five pages long. So if you're thinking that there will be thirty or forty pages of data and analysis and, you know, all of these different angles and directions, that is, as I've described multiple times throughout this process, that is not a reasonable expectation. You don't want to bury the lead on these things. And the way you do that is you have concise monitoring reports that anyone in your community can easily pick up and quickly identify either yes, we're accomplishing the community's vision or no, we're not. Then expecting people to have to wait through thirty and forty-page reports doesn't actually create transparency. It begins to obfuscate is the school system performing or not. But that means you should not expect that there will be dozens of pages of data disaggregated in a bunch of different ways. If that was what the board wanted, then the board needed to have expressed that in the form of its goals rather than having goals that are more general and encompassing a larger breadth of students. So there are trade-offs. The board has made trade-offs. The superintendent will have to make trade-offs. And that is, that is the function of prioritization, is that there are pros and cons in every single choice that you've made every step along the way. And the fact that you'll wind up with monitoring reports that are five pages long, that don't have the data disaggregated in a bunch of different ways is part of the trade-off that the board accepted and when it chose this style of goal setting.
Thank you, AJ. I just a request and a comment. And you can mute him so he can't respond to either. But no, because you could see I was smiling. My my comment or my request is when we practice the the monitoring, can you please bring an example of a district that's facing, you know, these equity gaps that these inequitable outcomes, so we can see what that looks like. My comment is, I was smiling as we were talking because our RPA department has set high expectations. So I can still imagine, Dr. Kana probably won't even allow us to do a five-page report that won't have clickable disaggregated data. That's why I muted muted you. See, we can debate about that in between the session. But okay, just we're getting to to time. So see how rich this is. That's why it would be great to spend in January, some, you're looking at sample reports and really talking about this. As far as the data, I'm just going to just jump to, I'm going to jump to one interpretation even. So if you can go to slide sixteen. And I, I, this was going to be Dr. Kana's slide, but I'm just going to say, because I appreciate it. So there's, we shared some interpretations and some trends, but if you go to sixteen, actually, if you go to fifteen, I do want to say, if you go to, no, one more back. One more back, sorry. Go on. No, no, two, two more back, one more. There you go. I mean, I do want to emphasize. You know, it, and again, we heard from our families tonight, like, you know, it is not acceptable to have these results and have the the gaps we have that, you know, when we want to be both a district and a city that prides itself on our commitment to equity overall and a district educational equity, we cannot then it's hard to keep saying there's that commitment when we see, you know, achievement gaps that are wider than any other place. And we need to be very clear, that's not because of our students and our families. That's because of, you know, what we're doing as a system, and that's why the system approach is so important. So that's just one interpretation I wanted to share. If you go two slides later. The other one is, I appreciate Dr. Kana, I kind of replicated a study that, a national study that was done that showed really whether schools and districts were kind of adding value as students progressed or or not. And you can see in ELA, if that's the bottom chart, in ELA, this is showing how kids from one cohort through the years progress. So for example, the class of two thousand twenty-six, between third grade and eighth grade, more than six percent more students improved, and that's tracking the same cohort of schools. The students approved by six percent, six percent more students met the standard. Look at what happens in math, though. So, you know, we know we have, I mean, we've talked a lot about literacy, we've gotten, you know, many postcards about the need for our literacy plan. We're working on a literacy plan, but this merits, you know, when I'm thinking about meeting our goals, this is merits a close look at like what's happening foundationally for our kids. But then what's happening if a kid falls behind? How are we supporting them? Because you see that they're they're declining over the years. So this is really helpful data to like craft an interpretation that you can hear, then can start to inform, provide some evidence for a plan that might say, you know, what are we raising questions, what are we doing for math intervention? Or what are we doing at the foundational level for for math to make sure they know those foundational skills, just like they need to know them in ELA? The last thing is if you go two more slides. One more, sorry. Is, so just to get the timeline, we're going, you know, in January, we're going to have this workshop I shared. I'll share the updated and ideally really finalize interim goals and interim guardrails. Then from February to June, we go through our process. We'll keep working on this monitoring process. And there may be, you know, interim goal, we haven't looked much at guardrail data to look at. So there'll be plenty to do, even if you're not getting the full monitoring reports between February and June. The meantime, you know, I'm doing the root cause analysis, looking at our budget, determining strategies and developing the infrastructure. And then by twenty, July twenty-three, launching some of those strategies and then implementing in progress monitoring next year. So maybe give a few more minutes for board comments and questions and and then we'll wrap up.
I have a comment around our goal three. I feel like we often glossed over that one. So it's going to be interesting, I think, just something to be mindful of, because we get pretty entrenched in goal one and two. But something that is important to me and be curious, you know, Dr. Wayne, as you're going through this with the team, this is why the portfolio of the entire of all high schools is so important, right? Because I'm intrigued around the data behind it, right? Like, who has access, right, to the CTE pathways, AP exams? You know, A through G, certainly, we've built in that infrastructure. I think we still have ways to go around what that monitoring looks like, especially if you're looking at the deep foods just in last year, sixty-two percent. So that's something that I'm particularly hungry for, is to really understand through the total portfolio. You know, and what ultimately is going to be alignment of resources, something that we haven't tackled. You know, and that's why I, this was an important goal for me.
Yeah, I guess for me, I think, I think for the public and for the school community, I think understanding that our goals as well as the interim goals are, I think, a part of the process that we're going on to kind of transform our school, but that it doesn't capture everything that's happening. And I think there's a greater need on the district to figure out how to both communicate what's happening as well as broadcast our thinking, kind of our thoughts and our strategies on our approach to deal with these issues. I think the thing that just stands out to me the most is just just how horrible a job we're doing at educating black students and how that's not a new issue. It's like a really longstanding issue in the district. And we just have not been able to successfully address it. And so I think partly we need to explain to people what's going to be different now, other than our process being different and how that's actually going to lead to outcomes specifically for black students, I think, in a way that our overall goals don't. And I know that we have strategies, we have approaches, but I think figuring out how we're communicating those strategies and how we're going to kind of be tracking and letting folks know, I think will be really helpful as we move forward. So I, I think people are still trying to get a understanding of how we're doing, what we're doing and how we're pushing it forward. So I think whatever we can do to make sure they understand the process and the outcomes. Thank you.
And do you have a, on a follow-up to Vice President Bogus, AJ, I think as part of our, you know, case studies, because I think that's going to be also really important to look at, you know, other districts across the country where we have seen, you know, the gains. You know, that you know those gains personally around the country and and what's possible. And what are some of those different, you know, when we talk about disruption or we're just doing things differently? You know, what are going to be those practices that we will look to? And again, that's not the board's role. I want to be clear about that. I'm a superintendent.
And you both made good points. We've talked a lot, so I just want to see if any other board members have additional comments or questions to put out there that we may not answer, then we have public comment on this item and then we'll we'll talk about next steps.
I have a very quick technical question. Where do we get the fifty-seven point five percent change on the circle? Like the previous ones, they have the overall.
Oh, that comes out in, that comes out in January?
Yeah.
So that comes out in January.
So it's not shown.
We don't have the most, and that's also partly why we just focus on the ELA and math. This is not, this isn't the most, this isn't data reflective of what happened in twenty-one, twenty-two, right?
This is fifty-seven point five percent in June of twenty twenty. And this, this data doesn't do twenty twenty, but I'm not sure how you get fifty-seven.
So what has happened is the state is also continuously trying to the state is trying to continuously revise their criteria of college and career readiness. And so as they are revising, this is the new iteration that they just put out, which is that if you meet any one of the factors that I've listed down, you are college and career ready. And so the goal here is not just completing the course, but also getting a C or better. You know, and so the percentages for each is given the last time they had used different criteria where they were using.
I'm going to recommend since, well, we'll, we're, I'm going to recommend, I think your point is, both your points are well taken in that we haven't spent as much time explaining to ourselves. We did on that workshop when deciding on this, remember, we actually looked at what was behind all of this. I think in the next workshop, it'd be good just like to make sure we're all on the same page of what is college and career readiness measuring? It's easy to know with the S-Back third grade literacy or eighth grade math. So let's make a note to spend some time on this.
And I just wanted to come back to one process point and maybe linking to our earlier discussion around empower. That, you know, these things, given our first guard rail, all of these decisions impact the work of principals and the work of teachers in schools and everyone else who works in schools, par educators, and so, I mean, I just think like, thinking about the next, you know, between now and June, and how are we going to really involve school communities in this conversation in a meaningful way, hopefully by that point in the spring, the payroll situation will be to a point where folks can begin to focus on other things. I think that's really, really important that there's, so otherwise, they're not going to, we can launch whatever we want next summer and they're not going to buy in if they're not part of the development. So I'm sure you all are thinking of that, but I just wanted to name it, because I think we've also gotten feedback in the past that when we have these conversations and we don't go talk about the fact that we're facing these other pressures, you know, and not just empower. I mean, there's also the social emotional impact of the pandemic, there's all these other things that educators are dealing with. So I just want to say for educators to know that, like, that we understand that we're not having this conversation in a vacuum. And we also know that we really need to engage people in schools in this.
Yes. Okay.
Are we closing out for discussion?
Yeah, so do you want me to say next steps now or after public comment?
Well, I have to be, to follow our own rules and procedures. We are now beyond ten o'clock. So according to rule, the procedures going through twenty, we have to vote to extend the meeting past ten o'clock. I was really hoping to get us that time, but I need to ask for, I like to ask for a motion in the second to extend the meeting. All right, let's still roll call, please.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Award?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomedy, six eyes. President Liam?
Yeah.
Thank you. That makes six.
Thank you. So I will now open up.
Well, should we turn off the? We have two public speakers on this item in person. We have Jeff Lucas and then Alita Fisher, and you can just go ahead and sit here for your testimonies.
How much time? How much time?
One.
One, okay.
Oh, what? Evening, I sent an email earlier today.
Want to get the mic up? Want to get more into the mic?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Jeff Lucas is saying in the email earlier today, quickly go through a little bit of it. The presentation that you just saw gives a lot of percentages. It doesn't give the numbers of students. So I went ahead and I converted the percentages into numbers of students, just to show you the size of the populations that we're talking about. Gives a little bit different perspective. And the other thing to focus on is when data is presented, it shows the number of students that meet the standard. Really, I think we want to focus on the students that aren't yet meeting the standard, and so I presented that as well. Anyway. That's my time. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for this very intentional process. This is such important work. And I would even suggest that this is so important that a committee around this work might be appropriate and something for us to consider next year. Going to your analogy, though, of, you know, the street data, specifically around reading, this feels like we're talking about San Francisco, but looking at a map of LA. We're talking about S-Back scores, but when we want to improve our reading for our students, we need to be looking at the foundational skills. We were just talking about that, about math, right? Phrenemic awareness, orthographic mapping, can our kids decode, can they blend, can they segment, do they have that letter-sound association? And nothing about F and P and nothing about S-Back gets us there. We need to be looking at those foundational skills. We need to be measuring that. And hopefully through the work we're doing with curriculum and instruction, we'll get there. But we're not even talking about that in the assessments we're talking about here. And one other thing with sped, I know my time is up, but when we talk about those increasing special education, students with IEPs were the only students who qualified for COVID recovery services last year. That was the only place that that tutoring was offered, just so you know.
Thank you. That concludes in-person public covenant.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you care to speak to this item. Each speaker will have one minute. Can we, can we please have that repeated in Spanish and Chinese? Okay, again, I'll model what we're doing in person, so calling groups. Selena, Parents for Public Schools, Ms. Marshall, H. Kelly and Rianda. Again, that's Selena, Parents for Public Schools, Ms. Marshall, H. Kelly and Rianda.
Hi, this is Selena. So I just want to remind everyone while you're looking at the data and you're you're thinking to yourself, wow, the Asian-American students are really performing very well. But I want to remind you, just for my son's school, which is the Yola Elementary School, with the school having students, forty percent of the student coming from non-English speaking families, and there are many of them on reduced and free lunch coming from poverty. So these are the students that you are looking at that are higher performing. And I, I want to remind you, while you're looking at their test score, also consider their socioeconomic challenges that they face. And please do not take away resources just simply because of their ethnicity. Let's, let's, let's think about how we can provide, you know, balanced resources. And and your job is to find out why, when this is a given resources to all, but why are we having different outcomes? That's your focus. That's what you need to do. And it should not be, you know, another ethnicity field and target it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Parents for Public Schools?
Hi, this is Vanessa. Um, I wanna just appreciate the superintendent's efforts to really look at data at multiple levels.
I'm, I'm sorry, you are, you, you are muffled and we cannot hear you well. Vanessa? I don't think she can hear us.
Vanessa, we'll try you back in a minute, okay? It's not coming. We'll try you back in a moment.
Ms. Marshall?
Oh, yes. Thank, thank you so much. Uh, I wanna thank the superintendent and his staff, um, and to Dr. Connor and her amazing staff, as always, with this information. However, of course, you know, I must be, I am concerned, as always, when I see this data with the bleak uh, test scores of African-American, Latino, uh, Latino students or A P I students. So my concern would be what is a district going to do to improve these test scores? Every parent wants their child to be successful in school. This, our students start school in TK, but they're not learning. We, of course, we just came out of a global pandemic and all that. So, uh, students were not doing well, need that extra class during the day to help them catch up. Not after school, after school fine, but they also need this self-enrichment class in math and language arts. Uh, uh, during the school day, you need to fix some kind of way in their school schedule. And every teacher needs to be trained as to how to teach to our students. And that's not the case. Every school needs to have a math teacher from K, from, uh, pre-K to twelfth grade. A credential math teacher, a co- a credential literacy co- coach who can teach reading. And, and you need to bring back some professional development from K twelve, from P, from pre-K to twelve. We need professional development back. So, so these bleak test scores, that we don't keep showing them to us. The schools, the students are in school, but what are you all doing? It does, it's not working. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. H. Kelly?
Hi, my name is Haba, um, and I have a couple of recommendations. One is, um, just like you did for Empower, where you brought forth the task force, where everybody was communicating, you were laser focused. Perhaps bringing in an early literacy expert for, in particular, reading might be a good idea. I have concerns about how the process is unfolding. As a part of that task force, I highly recommend special education educator because they understand interim goals. The other thing is, you need to look at this as fixing the system, system wide first. And then you need to focus on the focal groups. If you go about it the way you're going right now, I have just great concerns. And please don't forget special education students, their numbers are not so great either. I am grateful for this, but my son is in sixth grade. And he is struggling. My family does not have time for this to continue. We need to do better. Please reach out and make this happen. Reach out outside of S F U S D and make this happen. And please, F and P is not accurate for some students, especially for my son. Please keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rianda?
Good evening, Board Commissioners and everyone still in attendance tonight. Um, I just wanted to call in, um, cause I concur with Ms. Marshall, that the numbers for our African-American students, that are Latino babies and our, um, A P I babies are still staggering. And S F U S D has got to do better. Each year, we keep hearing the same thing over and over and over again, and it's time now, it's twenty-twenty-two. Our babies deserve a real and true education, just like every other student. And the first thing, it starts with the teachers and everybody else that they interact with. Seeing them as brilliant, seeing them as ready and capable and willing to learn, creating an environment that is conducive to learning and that is welcoming. Please, S F U S D, do better and stop failing our babies. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Hey, sorry, everyone. I somehow was, I, I muted myself, which I didn't wanna do. I wanna, I wanna thank the superintendent and the board, especially the superintendent, for looking at data in this way. I think it is really effective. As we engage in these conversations and we are educators and there's lots of acumen, acumen that we use, please try to use basic language, such as where we're talking about map, reference the book, because people may be thinking that you're referencing an assessment, okay? So as you're talking about it, make it really clear to the community how they can engage and be a partner in this with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller ending in seven, five, seven. Caller ending in seven, five, seven?
Hi, I'm Dorothy Clark with Parents for Public Schools. And looking at your chart, I noticed that the Black and Pacific Islanders, the sped and homeless and foster youth are suspended at higher levels than average in the past three reporting years. I'm curious about what exactly is an sustainable offense? Studies have shown that black children receive harsher punishment than other students committing the same offense, which caused me to wonder if that is true for our Pacific Islander students as well. How much intersectionality in these, in, in this experiencing high suspension? And what could we do about that? Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes virtual public comment for this item.
All right. Thank you and appreciate, uh, appreciate the public comments and um, the board discussion. I mean, we do have some, uh, this, you know, thinking and decisions to, to make around our interim um, goals and, and guardrails. And so looking forward to the future discussions. And, you know, definitely, uh, as we're examining literacy, we're gonna have to, uh, respond to some critical questions about uh, you know, both our approach and our assessments. And then we saw in the data, uh, it raises questions around what we're doing, uh, about math. I did just wanna appreciate, um, A J Krabell for, uh, being here tonight. Thank you. I'm not even sure where he is, but it's probably two or three hours later. Uh, and so thank you for staying up with us. Uh, I did really wanna appreciate our, our P A team. Uh, we have Dr. Ritu Kana. And I think Jess Reyes, last, uh, he probably came up to provide some context, but is, is one of the many brains behind the data. So let's give him a round, round of applause. I think I'm for, for their work. And, you know, and as much as I, I do appreciate that we had this conversation, um, this is, you know, a step, just like approving the goals was a step towards where we need to be. Uh, but it's a long journey and just, you know, want to, uh, appreciate the commitment to, uh, you know, uh, participate in that journey and then appreciate, you know, the community for, um, you know, uh, you know, recognizing it's gonna be a journey, but we, you know, I think through your process, you heard that people want us to be focused on student outcomes and student learning. And so it's nice to be sitting around a table and talking about that. We just have a long way to go to get to the outcomes that we want for our students. So with that, I know we have some more business to do. So I don't know if you just wanna do it here or go back.
Let's go back.
Okay.
We won't take a break.
Um, continue. And we are now at agenda item on consent calendar. And can I have a motion in a second on the consent calendar?
So move second.
For public comment, um, public, members of the public may, um, may comment on any matter on the consent calendar, but members of the public shall not be permitted to sever agenda items for discussion. I don't believe we have any public comment in person for consent calendar. Okay, thank you. Any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
No.
Any items severed by the board or superintendent for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
You, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu? Commissioner Matomedy? Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Bye, guys.
Moving to item I, consent calendar retroactive contract. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So move second.
And again, we'll open for public comment.
None in person?
Excuse me, any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
Nope.
Any items removed or severed by the board for discussion or vote tonight? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu, Commissioner Matomedy, Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisman Ward?
Yes.
President Lamb?
Yes.
Bye, guys.
Port from, uh, item J, moving to item J, board members' reports, report from board delegates to membership organizations. Seeing none. Um, the annual, um, California School Boards Association Annual Conference is at the end of this month. And a couple of us, um, delegates will be representing S F U S D, so we'll be sure to come back in December and report um, from that conference there. And at this time, let's see, we will now, any other reports by board members? Seeing none. And for item L, for information items for the public and on the record, just wanna note that the Choyler Report on Williams Complaints, um, is included in board docs as well as the annual report on Williams, um, complaints, and they are posted up on the agenda. And at this time, I'd like to formally adjourn our meeting at ten twenty-four. Thank you so much.